The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning. May I invite Commissioner Mason to perform the acknowledgement of country?
We acknowledge the First Nations people as the original inhabitants of the lands on which this hearing is sitting. Ngarranga, Jokorurungu, Kalkarney, Aranguk, Guaripa, Jarra, Ninnanja, Chura, Mura, Nganyanka. We recognise Meijin, Brisbane, Nanana, Orkanta, Nanyi, Mura, Meijinnga, Brisbaneta. We recognise the country, north and south of the Brisbane River, as the home of both the Joruba and Jawa nations. Nanana, Mura, Kanti, Nanyi, Karo, Panya, Brisbane Rivernya, Alenjara, Munu, Woparira, Aranguk, Mura, Richa, Chura, Ninnanja, Munu, Guari, Ninnanyi, Joruba nga, Munu, Jawa. And we pay respect to the Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Their land is where the city of Sydney is now located. We pay deep respects to all elders, past, present and future, and especially elders, parents and young people with disability. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Commissioner Mason. Are there any appearances to be announced beyond those that were announced yesterday? If not, then...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm instructed by Robertson Kane Solicitors and I appear on behalf of Leanne Pacino.
Yes, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Crowell.
Commissioner, this morning, the first witness to give evidence will be Dr. Tracy Westerman. Dr. Westerman has had some pre-recorded evidence given and we'll be hearing that this morning. There is a transcript that accompanies the pre-recording and that's to be found in the tender bundle part F at tab 51. I'll tender that transcript into evidence and ask it to be admitted as exhibit 8.4.
Yes, that can be done.
And if we might have then the recorded evidence of Dr. Westerman played to the commission. We're happy today to talk to the commission, Dr. Tracy Westerman. Dr. Westerman, are you able to hear and say me okay?
Yeah, I can.
And before you give your evidence, will you take an affirmation?
Yes, I will.
Do you solemnly sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence you will give to the commission will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please say, "I do."
I do.
Now, Dr. Westerman, you're an Aboriginal woman and a practising psychologist. Can you tell us about where your people are from?
So my traditional people are from the Rangamfilbra area, from between Port Hurst and Maribar. They're traditional tribal affiliations and Aboriginal people that sit around the origins of Yandie and station in Rangamfilbra.
And you're a practising psychologist. Can you tell us about your qualifications?
Yeah, so I undertook a Bachelor of Psychology at the University of Western Australia, which I concluded in 1956. I then worked with the Department for Community Development back then in the Sura Western Desert. Took a period of seven years away from studying, went back to Curtin University and undertook a Masters Degree in Clinical Psychology, which ended up being a combined Masters and PhD focusing on the psychological assessment of Aboriginal people, which I concluded in 2002 and that may be the first Indigenous person to complete a combined Masters and PhD in clinical psychology in Australia.
You mentioned about working for the Department of Community Development. What was the position that you had back then?
The position back then was as a graduate welfare officer, which essentially was providing welfare based services. Back then, we actually were combined with justice, well driven on justice. So we were actually involved with child welfare based services and well as justice services, but essentially as a child protection worker.
And throughout the time that you were completing your studies, did you become a psychologist with the department?
Yeah, I was the beneficiary, I guess, of an 80% scholarship scheme, which was an incredible scheme that the department used to have, which they had now said sadly, but what it actually meant was they were annually allowed Aboriginal people who were employed within the department to apply for a scholarship, which was 80% of your wage while you were studying. And then when you finished your study, you owed them the years back that they'd supported you for, which was 80% of your wage. That meant that I was able to complete my Masters Degree and PhD, which I did in three and a half years, both Masters and PhD.
In terms of your current practice, what's your role now?
So in 1998, I started Indigenous Psychological Services, which is a company that basically provides psychological services to Aboriginal people that exists with an absence of government funding. The idea, I guess, behind Indigenous Psychological Services is that we're able to provide mostly assessment, intervention, prevention and training programmes that have now since 1999 become nationally driven. So we have a national basic purpose, but we actually provide services across Australia, across a whole raft of different services, mostly psychologically based. I'm the managing director, so I should say.
Now, in your statement, you referred to the Julia Institute. Just tell us about that.
So the Westerman Julia Institute for Indigenous Mental Health is really, it's a non-profit, so it's a charity based. The idea, I guess, is that 20 years' worth of evidence-based work can actually then be driven by a non-profit, which enables us to access research and other funding integrated degree to ensure that the evidence-based programmes that we develop by our peers are able to be driven at a national level across, I guess, suicide prevention, mental health, cultural competency, justice and educational outcomes.
I want to take you back now and ask you about your PhD focus. Can you tell us what it was in particular that you were examining as part of that study?
Yeah, predominantly it was around the escalating rates of child suicide in the origins of it having been in Western Australia. Sadly, we've had now decades of the highest rates of child suicide in the world. What I actually found was that we were very poor at actually answering the why, which was really assessing the causal pathways to Indigenous suicide. And I was finding that what was happening was it was always starting off with assessment being culturally biased towards Aboriginal people. What we actually did was we went out and explored whether there were different risk factors for Indigenous suicide. And so we started from the ground up and built assessment tools that enabled us to determine whether the natural Indigenous suicide was different. We actually know that to be causal pathways, so of course causal pathways answer the why. So why was it that we're having such high rates of Indigenous suicide? And what I was finding, not just in Australia, but also internationally, was that we were just making assumptions that the causes for Indigenous suicide were the same. So no one had actually bothered to explore that at a whole population level. So I did that and developed the first unique clinically and culturally unique psychometric tool called Westerman Aboriginal Suicide Check, which we knew that basically told us that not only was the causal pathway to Indigenous suicide different, but the risk factors around depression were different, trauma was different. And also what we were able to do was then inform programmes around preventing the escalation of those different risk factors. And that's, I guess, what we started to do was look at that idea of difference at a level that was population informed, rather than just assuming that the risk factors of suicide and mental health were the same.
Now, one of the things you mentioned earlier as well was about cultural competence and assessment of cultural competence. Was that something that was part of your PhD focus as well?
Yeah, it was a big focus on it because of course what you need to do is you need to get the assessment right in terms of making sure that they're culturally valid or informed. The next bit obviously is we've got practitioners that essentially, the university not ensuring that they have training around universal standards of cultural competency. So again, in terms of answering the why, we went out and asked Aboriginal people the sorts of things that they were able to tell us that predicted cultural competence. And interestingly enough, that had never been done, not just in Australia, but also globally, that we were able to determine the predictors of cultural competency from a level of population-level informed information. So what we then did was determine those predictors, which were at different levels. And we designed the first cultural competency test, for want of a better phrase, that became known as, now is known as the Cultural Competency Profile for Mental Health. Now, what that enables us to do is it enables us to not only measure cultural competency, but importantly, what that's enabled us to do is also improve cultural competency by doing the target on an intermediate and practical level. So it's quite exciting stuff and I guess since then now, we've developed the general cultural competency profile, as well as recently the cultural competency profile for child protection, using that same idea of science informing our cultural competency.
Yes, I'll come back to those and ask you some more questions about those a bit later. But I just want to follow through at the moment with the psychometric assessment tools. After you completed your PhD and your studies, you then went on to develop a range of psychometric assessment tools that were of your own creation and own making. Tell us about those.
Yeah, I guess the first one was the youth tool, which obviously enabled us to screen early intervention, early saving risk. Then of course, the natural progression was a bit of an out of step. So that's great sort of agent and bug, we're able to then screen for early intervention, early saving risk across suicide and mental health. And increasingly, we're looking at that around the critical genetics and the justice system. The next thing, next test that was developed was called the Acculturation Scale for Aboriginal Strains, which has an extraordinary range of benefits. I guess what it enables us to do at a basic level is it enables us to inform the contribution of cultural identity as a, I guess, as a buffer for risk. Now, the reason why that's so important is because not all risk factors can be reduced. So what we know, for example, is that racism is a significant model of suicide risk, a significant contribution to mental health risk. You can't eliminate racism from the equation. There's some risk factors that are unalterable. So what you can do instead is you can figure out the things that actually buffer risk. So we've got the only body of research that actually determines the things that actually buffer or moderate suicide risk. And what we know is that acculturation enables us to, if you have a strong sense of cultural connection, cultural identity, that actually buffers risk factors, such as racism, those sorts of factors that become necessary after. So what we are, what we're able to do is able to obviously use testing, if you like, I wonder if it's around cultural identity, and then they informs treatment and intervention. Obviously, the next thing we need to do then is design programmes that are capable of treating the sorts of things that we know buffer risk and also address risk factors, which we've also done. The next test that we've developed is called the Acculturation Stress Scale for Aboriginal Strains. And that's actually really exciting in the sense that it's enabled us again to gauge and measure and treat the impacts of racism and marginalisation for Aboriginal people. And what we've actually done, which is again, pretty innovative in terms of the sorts of things that are going on internationally, is that we've been able to figure out the impacts of racism for Aboriginal people. Now, I guess what we know is that there is this, again, it just enables us to figure out at a treatment-based level or a risk-based level, how racism and marginalisation impacts. And now this year, what we can do is if we can figure out the sorts of things that we know have those vulnerabilities to be addressed from a practitioner perspective. So we don't just talk globally around things, we actually talk around individual risk, the sorts of things that can actually reduce risk and the sorts of things that can actually measure the impacts of what we're doing.
Now, the psychometric assessment tools that we've been talking about, these are developed specifically for Australian Aboriginal people to be assessed for a whole range of things. Risk factors for suicide was where it started, but also mental health conditions, mental illness.
Yeah.
And from that, that would include psychofacial disability leading from those mental health conditions. Now, could you just tell us about, in the psychological assessment, what do we, distinction do we make from the use of tools and the testing and assessment itself?
Yeah, okay, so it's a good question again. So testing would be the actual tests themselves. So tests that have been developed that we think are good indicators or good measures of saying intelligence, good measures of saying disability, good measures of saying depression. Those tools need to actually go through a process of psychometric determination, so that's the first thing. And that's actually quite a complex thing to do. So there's a clinical, there's a clinical side of things. So the more that you actually sample populations of people, that then gives you sufficient data so that you can actually figure out whether the test is actually a good measure of something. So for example, if something's a good measure of depression, then what should happen is statistically, all of those items that actually measure depression should actually come together statistically. And they'll refer to it as accounted for a certain amount of the variance, which actually means that those items don't vary too much to give the equality of chance because they are really strong on measuring depression. This is me trying to explain psychometrics to non-psychologists. So that's the first thing that you need to determine in the science around that the measure is actually a good measure. The next thing, I guess, that's a little failing in most of these tools is that they're not actually culturally informed. So they haven't actually put Aboriginal people in the design, in the construction of the tests. The next bit that actually talks to the assessment is that you then need to assess the person. So you can get them to do a test, that's just testing. Assessment is actually then, I'll have a conversation with you, we'll do a clinical assessment or interview with you to see whether those indicators are actually the case when, in your day-to-day. So for example, if I have done an assessment that tells me, I know that you are below average intelligence, then I need to have some measure, some gauge, that actually tells me day-to-day that the test is actually valid and indicates that you are not children of God. Now, that's the difference between testing and assessment. So often what then happens is people will just use a test and use the test alone to determine whether someone is functional or not. Assessment determines whether someone is functional or not based on their day-to-day ability to interact and to function and those sorts of things. So that's the difference between testing and assessment.
And in that process, where does the clinical assessment by the practitioner come into it?
It comes into it, I guess, I mean, the testing is part of it, I guess. What people should be doing, they administer a test, is they should be watching and interpreting how people go about undertaking a test. The troll is, is that if people are coming from a different cultural background, they don't understand how to interpret a test qualitatively. So an example would be Aboriginal people have very different learning styles. So what I would do when I'm administering mainstream tests of intelligence is I'm actually looking at how Aboriginal person goes about undertaking a task. And so that actually informs me about the sorts of cultural strengths that an Aboriginal person has. Now, you can't do that unless you're actually looking at from a cultural understanding of difference. And so often what happens is when my agents practitioner, they're unwittingly not able to interpret tests in a qualitative way, just purely because they don't understand the cultural differences of learning style and cultural differences of, you know, how people go about solving problems.
I want to ask you some more about the role that testing might play, the psychometric testing you've been talking about, might play in the assessment of disability.
Yeah.
So in terms of how those type of psychometric tests might be used, they might be used for determining cognitive or intellectual functioning disability?
Yeah.
Or an intelligence level which might indicate impairment that you've already spoken about?
Yeah. So essentially, there is a significant body of research now going back to 1960 to 1991 with Judith Kier's work that tells us that mainstream tests of intelligence, just to start with, are actually inherently biased or they're flawed. So what was happening was when intelligence tests first came out, Aboriginal people consistently were badly on mainstream intelligence intelligence. Now, how that was praised, what was that, that tests are accurate, that Aboriginal people lack intelligence. And so that was known as the deficit debate. Now, when Judith Kier's came along, she was quite incredible in terms of, single-handedly, it changed the whole flow of that argument around the fact that the reason why Aboriginal people do poorly on mainstream tests of intelligence is because you have to tap them into a cultural difference in intelligence. And so she actually found that what we're seeing, for example, is that Aboriginal people predominantly are just unable to use visual stimulation. Now, I shouldn't appreciate, because the tests haven't been constructed from Aboriginal view of intelligence, what then happens is Aboriginal people consistently will be set up to fail. So we're starting from applying people that's basically down here, that's not, that's not people. Then of course, what you have is the reality of the lack of face learning of those tests. And that means that just the pure face of it, people can't kind of understand the words, the language, the sorts of things that, why the tests are actually written. It's true about Aboriginal people because we don't have structured Spanish language English as part of, you know, our normal language development, our standard language development. Of course, what's going to happen is we're going to do worse at those tests purely because of cultural difference, not deficit. And so what happens obviously is that if you assess there's been lower intelligence, then of course that label will follow you for the rest of your life. And then you go into, you know, school those systems and there's already an assumption that people are less capable than what they are. What we then know is that there's significant research around the self-fulfilling prophecy, which essentially remains based on Peterson Ward's research, is that teachers consider Aboriginal people to be less capable than non-Indigenous counterparts. So the knock-on effects of all these sorts of inherent errors and bias within mainstream tests are actually quite significant. And that's just putting the cognitive part of the assessment, the mental health and social evaluation part of the assessment is actually even more dire than that's possible.
Yes, well, those things that you've been talking about, are they the sort of bias that might fall under the construction label, construction bias in the development and design of the test?
Yeah, it's true, it's true many areas just in terms of liberty and you've got reliability. So reliability means that a test can give the same results every time. So what we tend to find is that Aboriginal people will be assessed by someone who has less cultural competence. And they'll get a certain IQ or a certain score, and then they're assessed by someone who has cultural competence, and the score is significantly higher. Now, intelligence should not go up and down like the stock market. It should be fairly stable. So if you get that degree of difference based on getting the same test, then there's concerns with the reliability of the test. What we've been really bad at informing at a national level around is explaining the why. So the fact that we're able to measure cultural competency based on what cultural competency tests advises us with a very big neck opportunity here to not only explain the why in terms of why mainstream tests are so culturally flawed with Aboriginal people, but it also enables us to address it. If we can improve the cultural competency of psychologists, then do we have, does it actually predict better utilisation and application of mainstream assessment tools, as an example? In terms of validity, there's three main areas, just a matter of really, really quick and simple. The first one is constructivity, so tests need to be constructed from a Aboriginal view of intelligence, Aboriginal view of depression, Aboriginal view of whatever. So it's about the tests being constructed from the ground up. No tests have actually done that except mine. The second issue is this thing called place ludi. And place ludi sounds exactly how, how it's said, means exactly what it sounds like. And that is that on the face of it, I can't understand this test because of the language, that's not actually Indigenous specific because of the words that I can't relate to because of just difference in language. The final one, the thing that most of the tests that are used in Australia really lack, and it's then called predictive validity, which I've talked about a little bit already. And essentially what that means is that if I assess you and I consider you to be low levels of intelligence, then that test better predict that you lack intelligence in terms of your day-to-day function capacity. And what we've found consistently in all over across Australia is that when Aboriginal people have been assessed by mainstream tests of intelligence, they consistently lack all those liberties in terms of predicting that that someone is actually not as capable as what, you know, the test actually is they are. They just lack that functional and practical validity.
And with those differences in the validity of the tests, what's the impact on the outcomes then for Aboriginal people who undergo those types of tests?
Well, I guess the first thing, the obvious thing is that they're labelled inappropriately. And that's just the cognitive side of things. So if you're labelled as not being terribly right, which is a hot topic with Aboriginal people, that is then going to follow you through for life in terms of educational outcomes. We see in employment outcomes, for example, so we see, we do a lot of work with mining companies, I used to do lots of work with mining companies who were short this people on the basis of carding them on the use of a mainstream, you know, test of intelligence. And of course, Aboriginal people would not pass the mainstream intelligence test, which basically means that people don't get an opportunity for employment. Then what happens, of course, is that a self-fulfilling prophecy of wide expectations gets created by the environment, assuming that people lack intelligence. I guess what we're seeing in the mainstream is that people, Aboriginal people experience misdiagnosis, overdiagnosis and underdiagnosis, arguably more than any population in the world. So you're more likely than anything to get it wrong. And that's not a circumstance that we should be facing. We're seeing the rates of suicides, the rates of child removal, the rates of incarceration and poor educational outcomes, that we should be doing a better job of it for the community.
I wanted to just ask you about that. In the child protection area, a First Nations parent with a disability, a cognitive or intellectual type of disability, which has been assessed by the use of these type of mainstream assessment tools, how do you consider that those type of use of the mainstream tools might be biased or flawed in the way the assessment is carried about?
I guess it's the same principle, but because the tests, tests are really interesting, they often tell you what people can't do, they don't tell you what people can do. And I guess if you have an understanding of cultural difference, then your job is to explain what people can do. So an example would be, when I assess Aboriginal people, I'll use mainstream tests. But what I'm actually really good at doing is I'm really good at departing from mainstream and reputation processes in a way that loads onto cultural differences. And then I see whether that makes a difference in terms of outcome. Then what that means is I can actually inform others and say, look, if you actually alter your teaching practice, if you alter how you go about, you know, delivering your counselling or therapy in this particular way, an Aboriginal person is going to be more likely to understand it, will be more likely to process it. And that's what people want to know. People want to know that. And so what often happens is because people have a lack of cultural understanding of parenting differences and cultural learning style differences, they're unable to inform people about the why and what they need to do, that's different, that taps into learning style differences.
Now, we talked about the mainstream assessment tools. What about if a mainstream assessment tool is adapted to use in a situation of making an assessment on a First Nations person?
Yeah, okay. Not really. I'll give you two really sober examples, I guess. One is the Nerso de Multi-Fasic Person Unit Inventory. And the other one is the Beck Depression Inventory. I'll give you lots and lots and lots of examples, so let's just start with those to just complicity. So the Beck Depression Inventory is a good example, a tool that's been used globally. Now, what actually happens with tests is they're constructed from a mainstream view of something. Now, what actually happens with tests is they're constructed from a mainstream view of something. We've got pretty good evidence that actually tells us that depression looks different, that psoriasis looks different, that trauma looks different. So really what you're doing is you're faring to recognize difference from the very start. So then what you're doing is you're essentially adapting, and often that means just rewording or repressing the face of the unitary test. But what you haven't done is you haven't addressed the construct and predictive validity of those tests. So a good example with the Beck depression inventory is that the words, the wording is quite negative, so its characters are negative. Now, you might have actually heard of this thing called the yes syndrome. That's quite well-known, it's about language difference. And it's related to Aboriginal English to a certain extent. Diana Ains refers to this as gratuitous concurrence. And essentially what this means is that if you negatively phrase a question, an Aboriginal person will agree with that negatively phrased question, will endorse it. So that's called the yes syndrome, and it's fairly consistent from research in terms of that. Now, the reason why this is relevant is because depression inventories are quite negatively phrased. And so what they've shown is that, interesting enough, China's population standards as well, is that when you use a mainstream depression inventory, because they're quite negatively phrased, and they even concern so good of the differences in symptomology of depression, then what will happen is Aboriginal people will score higher cut-off scores because of cultural difference, not because of deficit. Another example is the Minnesota multi-faceted personality inventory. That's also, they're trying to adapt that as well. Now, the problem with that is that it has items in there that actually tap into cultural difference. So an example would be Aboriginal people believe we have a prevailing belief system that spirits and deceased loved ones can visit us. We actually have that as a prevailing belief system. Now, Aboriginal people can endorse that, because of cultural difference. When that happens, when they use the NPI, they label those psychopathic demons. Because they keep on the psychopathic demon stuff. So there's extraordinary examples of mainstream tests and the desire to adapt them. But what actually happens is you inherit you inherit knee flaws, both scientifically and culturally, and remarkably clinically, of those flaws into the adaptation process, so it actually doesn't change a lot.
And when we're talking about a mainstream test, what do we mean by mainstream?
I guess what we mean is, interesting enough, most of the tools have been developed based on American college students, which probably says a lot about American college students. They're often, you know, they're available to do big research. And so what would happen is they get paid to initially, you know, inform the development of psychometric tests, and then they'd norm them, mostly on American college students. So what would then happen is that they bring these tests into, you know, Australia or Japan or wherever they would be, and then ultimately what would happen is they'd at least get good norms. But it's predominantly Eurocentric, it's predominantly, you know, the term I use is obviously mainstream, but it's predominantly generated from, you know, a Eurocentric view of intelligence, mental health, disability, whatever you want to call it. But most of them come from either North America or the US.
I want to ask you about then, you mentioned earlier about the Aboriginal people being underdiagnosed, overdiagnosed, misdiagnosed. What are the consequences for those testing results for a First Nations person with a cognitive or intellectual disability or a mental illness with those type of assessment results?
I think if I'm going to say something uniform across underdiagnoses, misdiagnoses and overdiagnoses, it's basically that, if you get assessment wrong, you get treatment wrong. It's as simple as that. So all those are like assessment. You get assessment wrong, you get treatment wrong. You fail to, you know, target the sorts of things that are going to make an actual difference to the lives of Indigenous people. And I guess what happens is people don't get access to the services they need, don't get access to the programs they need. But most importantly, if you get assessment wrong, you can't actually measure the impacts of what you're doing properly. And in fact, there's a lot of evidence that suggests that shows that if you get assessment wrong, you get treatment wrong, and you can actually make things worse. So obviously, if you assess someone who's being, you know, not eligible for services, then that's obviously going to impact them greatly. If you assess someone who's being accessible to services, but you've actually got assessment wrong, i.e. you're not terribly right, and they really are quite right, then that actually creates a self-fulfilling prophecy in terms of the assumption that they lack intelligence, but they actually have a cultural difference in intelligence. So it has lots and lots and lots of impacts, whether it's misdiagnosis, overdiagnosis or underdiagnosis. Essentially, what's happening is you're not actually making a measurable difference to the lives of Aboriginal people culturally.
Let me just ask you then about a more specific setting that we're concerned with at the moment, in a child protection system setting.
Yeah.
That type of psychological assessment using tools of that nature, if there is a misdiagnosis or overdiagnosis, how do you see that that might then have a bearing then upon the type of actions or outcomes in the child protection system?
Well, children get removed, simple as that. So we currently don't assess, for example, a great example is we're going to a community and we'll do an assessment on parenting capacity. And what we'll do is we'll start off using a generen, which is a nuclear family model in terms of who a child is more attached to, who constitutes the attachment, the attachments of the actual child themselves. And so obviously with Aboriginal people, we attach at a whole community level. So there's a whole community kinship attachment map. And certainly the work that we're getting Western Australia, what we're hearing really distressing priorities are the fact that children were very removed on the basis that child protection workers have failure to understand how to do cultural mapping. That a kid looked as if they were being neglected, where in fact they were being cared for by auntie or uncle for, consistent with Indigenous kinship systems. And so if you don't understand things like skin groups, if you don't understand things like the dynamic nature of attachment for Aboriginal kids, then clearly what you can do is you can get that wrong very quickly and assume that children have been neglected on the basis of cultural difference, and their kids end up in care where they shouldn't end up in care. And then the knock-on effects of that is what, I guess, what we're seeing across Australia is that we are very risk-focused rather than prevention-focused from the very start. Then, of course, when you don't understand attachment-based differences, you can see difference as attachment disorders. And I see this playing itself out pretty much every single day, that Aboriginal people parent their kids very differently. We have very different parenting styles. So a great example is, we actually encourage kids to be more concerned about the group, not themselves. And often what happens is parents won't be involved in problem-solving at an individual child level, and they encourage kids to go around us without boundaries and without restrictions, but be more concerned with siblings, cousins and mates as a mechanism of developing boundaries naturally within siblings and cousins and mates. Now, that looks like parental neglect or maternal neglect. So that's just one example. There are things, for example, like avoidant relationships, that skin groups are kind of tight. Some communities will have skin groups. That's another great example, that looks like avoidant attachment disorders. But people cannot be close to them because of avoidant type relationships. So there's this myriad of cultural factors that actually made that Aboriginal people consistently then assess as having poor parenting capacity, or be assessed as having attachment-based disorders. And essentially, it's about the fact that the tests might always be, as I've been talking about, that we have to construct a test from ground up to ensure that we're actually in a certain frame, and then treatment becomes better informed, access to services become better informed, and we're actually really clear, I guess, most importantly, about the sorts of things that are performing program outcome, you know, robustly.
The question I was asking there started with talking about the assessment tools, but I think in your answer, you've talked about both the use of the tools and the actual assessment or by observation and looking at the family dynamics as well beyond the assessment tool, but what you say is the same type of perceptions and absence of the cultural understanding impacts upon the outcome?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Because parenting difference is about, you said, is deficits and their differences. And often what happens again, and some of it is without intent, some of it is just nature that people don't understand that Aboriginal people parent their kids differently. And so the problem is, due to lack of cultural competence in child protection, that child protection workers have a fear of getting things wrong, and particularly when their child is at the same risk, because they don't understand cultural difference well. So even cultural mapping, understanding kinship and health and that, it might seem to bring extraordinary difference to their outcome.
How would a practitioner, whether they're in the child protection system or not, but how would a practitioner go about then identifying whether a culturally appropriate assessment tool and assessment framework is required or not?
I guess, I mean, the first thing is people, generally, we just say people need to identify as Indigenous Australian. So then, obviously, that then dictates, it should dictate difference. The work that we do across Australia, essentially, certainly the work in Western Australia is around looking at cultural policies and procedures. And so what that provides organisations with is the step-by-step. So an Aboriginal person will identify. The next phase is that you do cultural mapping. The next phase is that there's the sorts of treatment implications that those sorts of things then have. There's the assessment tools that are more culturally fair that you can actually use. So essentially, that's what you need, in a step-by-step, that can guide organisations around those sorts of things without just making assumptions that people don't understand how to do it. It's clear they don't. So it's really around organisation, with people being able to be trapped around, you know, difference, and then being informed around the sorts of things that need to be done differently procedurally.
And just following on from that, how would a practitioner making an assessment about, for example, parenting capacity assessment, how would they be able to determine whether the results of the assessment is cultural differences rather than an actual deficit?
I guess the first thing is cultural mapping, which is the cultureations scale that I've talked about. So we will issue the cultureations scale, which then informs the attachment map. And then the next thing we actually do is an individual child level is that we would actually figure out what capacity there is probably in a community context to respond to a whole range of attachment is actually assessed based on the environment's ability to respond to a whole range of positive and negative emotions that a child needs. So that's essentially what attachment assesses. The difference is with Aboriginal people is that there are many more people that respond to a whole range of positive and negative emotional needs of a child. The trouble is when you go in and you're trying to assess that from a mainstream perspective, you're often missing the attachment map that the Aboriginal child has, which you're looking at based on nuclear family mum and dad. So the first thing I would do as a practitioner is I would see a high-risk hill, and I'd observe, and observe, and observe, and observe at a community level, every single emotion that a child emits, whether it's anger, whether it's distress, whether it's happiness, whatever. And which person in the community responds to those different emotions. And whichever emotion they fail to respond to, I then teach them how best to respond to those different emotional needs. So how you develop secure attachment is in the environment's capacity to respond to a whole range of positive and negative emotions in a child. The trouble is, is that people are coming in looking at it from a mainstream mum and dad perspective, and they assume that attachment needs are not being addressed and responded to in a child where they actually are. And so it's something that's really fundamental in relation to giving an assessment of attachment parenting really quite wrong.
I want to ask you more about then, for the, an individual worker or assessor in a child protection system setting, how important is it for that person to have cultural competence in carrying out their roles?
Yeah, absolutely critical, because, I mean, I think what we're saying is we have failed to measure, except for the work that we've done, so we've sampled five hundred child protection workers, and we've actually failed nationally to actually measure the contribution of cultural competency or the lack of cultural competency on outcome for Aboriginal families. And so I guess that the ability to measure cultural competency provides us with, the first thing it does is it tells us the nature of the workforce. It tells us where people are at in terms of just having minimum standards of cultural competency. What that then enables us to do is it enables us to figure out whether areas where there's high Aboriginal child removal, high rates of child removal, have lower rates of cultural competency compared to regions that have, you know, lower rates of child removal, high Aboriginal population. So we've been able to essentially demonstrate that in our work that we've done with the testing of cultural competency of child protection workers. What that enables us to do then is it enables us to inform what to do in order to give us our best opportunity of reducing rates of child removal. Because essentially what it means is we've been able to determine from a living space perspective, the contribution of cultural competency to the high rates of child removal. Improve cultural competency, hopefully reduce rates of child removal. But cultural competency is a really ill-defined thing, and what we've actually been able to do is define it based on eighteen different dimensions. So that then informs really targeted intervention. So what we've again done with our cultural competency work is we test them based on our cultural competency. I then design a targeted training intervention, and then we post-test them to see what improvements we've had. Now, we're the only ones to ever that have actually managed to do that. So can you measure cultural competency? Yes, you can. Can you improve cultural competency? Yes, you can. So that's really exciting stuff, because what it enables us to do is, again, explain the why, but also why then informs us what to do about it, which is what sort of training people need, how you can actually ensure people get the training they require. But most importantly, we can then develop robust data around, hopefully, the rates of child removal decreasing relative to improvements of cultural competency. But that's something that needs to be driven nationally, that's something that needs to be, I guess, longitudinal, and, you know, driven over time, so that we can really be clear about what's having an impact on projecting child removal rates.
You've been talking about the cultural competency. Is it enough for someone to undergo cultural awareness training? Is that the same thing?
No, cultural awareness, I mean, what we've found is there's eighteen different dimensions of cultural competency. So there's five major areas. One of those is cultural knowledge, which is your basic cultural awareness. So give people knowledge and that's sufficient. Obviously, we know that's not the case. Within cultural knowledge, there's actually four different dimensions. So we test things, for example, like local cultural knowledge, application of knowledge, child protection-specific knowledge. So there are things such as, I know about simulation policies, I know about attachment mapping, I know about attachment mapping, I know about lack of identity formation, I know all these sorts of things that I need to understand in order to ensure that I'm addressing the needs of Aboriginal families better. And then we have just general cultural knowledge. Then we have skills and abilities, which actually looks at your ability to adjust your counselling, adjust your therapeutic interventions that tap into cultural differences in, you know, cultural springs. The next thing we look at, essentially put it forward on, is beliefs and attitudes and cultural empathy and awareness. Now, those questions really tap into unconscious bias. Now, this is something that is really challenging as a trainer, because what I actually do is I do targeted intervention around addressing unconscious bias with racism in people in a way that makes unconscious bias conscious, but gives people practical strategies to shift them at a level of prevailing belief system. So the cultural competency tool, really, it actually was assesses whether people have inherent racism. And then my job is to put them into training workshops that address unconscious bias in a way that shifts their prevailing, you know, attitudes around, based on racism and racism. So it's not easy to do, but I mean, you know, it's quite challenging, but this is the stuff that we spend time doing. Then that last couple of resources and licenses, having access to culturally appropriate arms, sorry, it's not, culturally appropriate assessment tools and links and so forth, licenses or organizations. And the final one is just organisational cultural competency. The last one is organisational cultural competency. So essentially what we do is we get to gauge the cultural competency of their organisations. And of course, everything we do is we do that by Aboriginal person, Aboriginal staff, which bias, so it's actually really interesting in terms of differences that we see.
In terms of the assessments of cultural competency, you've talked about the tool that you've developed that can measure cultural competency. Apart from the tool that you've developed, are there other ways that that can be measured?
No, not to the extent of science that we've actually applied. So it was what we've done again is we're going out and asked Aboriginal people if you had to go into a council, if you had to go into a service, what are the things that tell you that your confidence, that they are culturally competent? And so we define that with seven hundred and twenty-three Aboriginal people, so it's really robust scientifically. And so once we figured out the predictors, now what we've done is we've normed those tests to strike why. So we've got normative data on all. enormous data on all those three tests. So 500 in the child protection cultural competency, over 3,000 on the mental health one, and over 3,000 on the general cultural competency profile. So what it actually does is it taps into all the dimensions of cultural competency. There's some cultural competency based tools internationally, but they focus mostly on the beliefs and attitudes bit. We focus on many more dimensions than that. And with the idea being that we want to actually devote a home or change. And that's the difference with the work that we do. And also, you know, having something that has now been demonstrated to be capable of improvement, you know, we target a new dimension, current dimension.
You mentioned earlier on about, use the phrase causal pathways. How important is the cultural competency of, of people undertaking assessments in the child protection field for First Nations people, particularly parents with disability? How important is it to have that competency in terms of those causal pathways?
It, it's critical. It's absolutely critical. Because essentially, the first thing is getting the test right, which is the causal pathway stuff around suicide and mental health. So it's actually the causal pathways around suicide, depression, you know, justice, for example, is not that different. The next bit though is about how the practitioner interacts with an Aboriginal person and, or is able to apply assessment in a culturally appropriate way. You know, are you able to assess, you know, your Aboriginal family, are you able to apply it in a way that we know is culturally appropriate? Are we able to apply cultural appropriate interventions? If we actually don't assess, assess the levels of cultural competency, then we can't actually figure out what impact the lack of cultural competency is having overall on those, you know, terrible statistics we kept talking about, you know, the overrepresentation in child protection, suicide rates, those sort of things. No university has actually required that anyone in the whole profession has minimum standards of cultural competency. Essentially what that then means is that all the training is inherently mainstream. So this is why getting cultural competency right is so critical, because it informs the what, which is the sorts of training that people need, the sorts of capacities that people need on which they'll go out and, and do appropriate work at a community level. So if we're not actually getting that right in terms of understanding the nature of the workforce, then we're not actually giving them what they need to be able to ensure that they are culturally competent when they're working in Aboriginal communities. And I see this every day when you have science psychologists graduate and they'll get sent out to the remote Kimberley and they'll absolutely fall apart the seams because they are feeling culturally unsafe every single day with the fact that their training is so mainstream and so inherently, it hasn't been tested with Aboriginal people, that they're really struggling to know, literally, from engagement always through the therapy through the testing, whether any of their training actions is culturally appropriate. So it's, it's really quite critical in this whole, whole area.
In your statement, Dr Westman, you've, you've made a number of suggestions and recommendations for things that the commission may consider for, for change in this area and in the scope of what the commission's inquiry is concerned with. Are there any particular aspects of those recommendations that you would like to speak to?
I think probably the, the big one, I mean, we keep coming back to assessment again. And I guess program A is, is getting the tests right. So develop uniquely clinically culturally valid tests. The next thing is actually ensuring that we have cultural competency and standard across all these areas so that people are actually capable of administrative assessments, ensuring that they can then have treatment programs that have been determined as, you know, as having effectiveness with Aboriginal people. And be able to, I guess, have a national, a national body that actually drives all those sorts of things for, for people who are just really struggling day to day to know, you know, what sorts of things they can do to make an impact in the lives of Aboriginal people. I guess I've spent, you know, 23 years training, well, I have 30,000 practitioners across this country. So I had a pretty good yardstick of how much people struggle. And we really are letting them down in terms of informing them around treatments and best practice, giving them culturally appropriate, you know, assessment tools to be able to do that. And most importantly, just not gathering any evidence of what's actually worth and nationally worth, which, you know, you, you, you just, it's almost like we could continue to throw the money after that really, I think.
Yes, thank you, Dr Westman. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Witness that we have is Leanne Pacino. But before we commence her evidence, could we perhaps have a short break just for a few moments, just to get ourselves organised?
It's, shall we resume, shall we resume at 10:35 Brisbane time, 11:35 Sydney time?
Yes, thank you Chair.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Sydney hearing room, are we ready to?
Yes.
The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Yes, thank you Chair. The next witness we have is Leanne Pacino, who is present in the hearing room to give her evidence. Chair, there is a statement of Ms Pacino, which is in the tender bundle part B at volume two, tab 15. I tender that statement, but ask that at this stage, if a non-publication order may be made over the statement until further order.
Yes, all right. Well, there'll be a direction then that the statement and no part of the statement of Ms Pacino is to be published until further order by the commission. Can we proceed to Ms Pacino's evidence?
Yes, we can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Ms Pacino, for coming to give evidence to the Royal Commission. Mr Crowley will now ask you some questions. Thank you.
And Ms Pacino, could you just tell us first of all, where you currently work and what your role is, please?
Yes, I currently work at Inalr Indigenous Health as a caseworker there. I'm providing intense case management to Aboriginal families. And I am also a racial equity specialist under the Institute of South Pacific for Courageous Conversations About Race. So I have two hats.
Just dealing with your role at the Inalr Indigenous Health Service, how long have you been in that position?
I've been in that position for four years, but I've actually been working at Inalr Indigenous Health for 16 years.
And do you have qualifications in this area?
Yes, so I completed a Bachelor of Indigenous Primary Healthcare at UQ. And I also have done Diploma of Youth work and also done that further training for that Courageous Conversations About Race.
Just tell us a bit more about that. What is that?
So it's a two-day training workshop that talks about race and racism within systems. And it looks at your own personalised experience as a racialised being. So it actually took me a year to become accredited facilitator for that. And it's teachers' tools because we're socially constructed not to talk about race or racism. So it's a two-day workshop where we teach participant tools to talk about race and racism and to get that multiple perspective as well. So it's a real personalised journey for people. And it is life-changing for them, as we've had a lot of feedback about. So I'm one of the four facilitators.
Now, when you say it's a two-day workshop, it's a two-day workshop that you teach as a facilitator?
Yes, so I'm accredited for that through the South Pacific. There's only about eight of us in Australia that can actually deliver that workshop. It's a specialised area that I work in. And yeah, it's a two-day programme that I deliver as part of that.
Ms Pacino, I wonder, I wonder if you wouldn't mind speaking just a little more slowly because we do need to translate your evidence and it needs to be followed on a real-time transcript. So you're not the first witness that's been asked to speak a little more slowly. If you wouldn't mind just bearing that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms Pacino, could you tell us a bit more then about your role at the Inalr Indigenous Health Service, what you do there?
So my current role as the caseworker is providing that intensive support to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families, in particular the women. And it's always led by the women. And yeah, I pretty much client-led, client-focused, and I try to empower them to, to make decisions. So it's an intensive case management model.
Now, the health service itself, what sort of services does it provide?
So it was originated by Dr Noel Hayman and Arnie Nola White 25 years ago. They were the founders of Indigenous Health. And it's a, it's a primary healthcare setting. It's meant, it's a one-stop shop for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. It has doctors, nurses in a clinical setting. It has a community health team, which is who I fall under, which has a psychologist, social worker, health workers, client support officers. And then it also has a research component. So we're known as the centre of excellence. So we're like a one-stop shop for Aboriginal and Torres Strait.
Now, what I'll ask you about, one of the programmes that you've been involved in in particular, the Empowering Strong Families Programme 4077, just tell us about that.
So that was originated from, we, we realised that there was high smoking rates among pregnant Aboriginal women and we wanted to do something about it. So we got some funding under the Tackling Indigenous Smoking Grant, and it was around the new initiative. So we thought if we could provide a service to these women and an intensive case management model of care, we could really start to address smoking. Because at the moment, smoking within a mainstream setting is really focused on smoking itself. When you work in an Indigenous health context, it has to be a holistic approach. That's where the programme started from. And we've changed it over the years to suit the community because it's always community-led, not service provider-led. We listen to community.
Now, when you say it's changed over the years, why has it?
Well, when we first started, you know, our main goal was to try and help these women to either reduce or quit smoking. We soon realised that that was not a priority for these women. We had to actually start to address some of the issues that these women were facing. So it became that, once we can address the stresses and the barriers that these women and families are facing, then can we look at smoking? So we started to change the model of care so it suited the participants.
What were some of the issues that you were seeing, the bigger issues?
Uh, intergenerational trauma, drug and alcohol, domestic violence, childhood abuse, quite traumatic. And, you know, things as Centrelink and housing, housing's a major issue. So there was a lot of issues that we, if you don't have a stable house, food on the table, you're not going to be able to address smoking. So once we kind of address those basic needs that everyone in Australia is entitled to, then you can start to address smoking in that context.
By the way in which the programme changed, did it then become more an emphasis on the big issues first, and then we get to smoking?
Yeah. And you will see with our research that has been now published, that's what we talk about. We talk about that if we can address these issues with the women, the ones that they tell us are the issues, then you can start to get smoking on the agenda. And we did have women quit. We definitely had people reduce smoking, which was a celebration because with all the stresses in their life, it can be quite a hard one to address smoking as well as a priority.
Just give us an outline then of how, with that change in focus of the programme, how the service and the programme went to tackle those bigger issues?
Um, I guess to tackle those big issues, you really have to ensure that you have the trust of the women and the community. You have to ensure that it's, it's led by the women and that you're actually empowering them, you're walking alongside them. I never work with clients and walk in front of them. I'm always going on the journey with them. And I think that's the real key when working with women, Aboriginal women in particular, not just sit at your desk and wait for them to come to you. You've actually got to get out in community. And once they know you, they're familiar with you, then you're able to really address some of those hard issues because they trust you.
I should ask you this, Ms Pacino, you work in this area and, and with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families and women in particular, but you're not a First Nations person yourself?
No, I'm actually a white woman from New Zealand. And I think that's why I'm here today is to speak up because I support these women for 16 years. And I think it's important that the truth needs to be heard and.
And I'll just ask you to confirm, this is the position, coming here today to give your evidence, even though you are employed by the Inalr Health Service and Queensland Health, you've come today to give your evidence, they are your views, you're not expressing views or opinions that are held by the department?
Definitely not. This is my 16 years of experience and training is what I'm speaking on behalf of today, is what I've seen and witnessed. And when I walk alongside these women, it's their stories as well.
Now, can I ask you about the, the women that you work with in the service? Can you tell us how many of them have poor mental health conditions?
Uh, I'd say in my opinion, 100% of the women I work with either suffer from depression, anxiety, post-traumatic stress, anxiety disorder, like, yeah, 100% of the women. They have suicidal ideation. So there's, yeah, I'd say 100% of women I work with suffer from a mental health.
And in, in the programme, are they considered as being clients who have psychosocial disability?
Yes.
Just tell us about how they are then treated for those disabilities?
Um, so the women I work with, I guess, when you work in an Aboriginal community, there's a lot of shame and stigma attached with mental health. So through my role as a caseworker, I provide that in intensive case management and support and advocate for them to access mental health services because there's always a lot of stigma. So getting them into a GP for a mental healthcare plan with the possibility of referring on to a psychologist or medication if the doctor sees fit.
And in your particular role, is it an advocacy role, a facilitating role? Could you just describe what it does?
Yes. So for me, I strongly advocate for these clients because often we live in a world where we're not all born equal. So I see part of my role as a white woman is to really advocate strongly for Aboriginal people and speak up in situations where power, where they don't feel they have the power to talk up. So I'm a real strong advocate for these women and families.
You told us earlier about building a relationship of trust with your clients. How important is that?
Oh, that's fundamental. If you don't have trust, then you won't get anywhere. I mean, trust is, is key to working within an Aboriginal community. Because they, they suss you out, they figure out who you are, and they'll soon find out just by looking at you if you're legit or not. So, I mean, I've been there for 16 years. So it's a built-up reputation, I guess, over the years that has led me to be where I am today.
In, in the types of things that you do in your role, does that involve being in contact with other government agencies or departments?
Yes. So I have a lot of contact with housing, Centrelink and child safety.
And in that contact, are you acting in that advocate and conduit type of role for the clients?
Yes, that's correct.
So what sort of things do you do when you're in contact with those departments?
Well, in my role as an advocate, I ensure that the women's voices are heard. Often, I've found and the women tell me that they feel disempowered when they are talking to government organisations. So as part of my role is to ensure that their voices are heard and ensure that they're treated with dignity. I find that when I have been to meetings with departments, there's a disempowerment to Aboriginal women and they're unable to speak their truth. And there's stigma associated too with, for these women. So I see my role as a white woman to really speak up and speak into that space and challenge and support the women through that process. Because it's a hard system to manoeuvre, especially when you're an Aboriginal woman in a system that's not built for Aboriginal people.
I want to ask you specifically about the role that you perform as an advocate assisting these women with the child protection system. So the Department of Child Safety, you have interactions with them in your role?
Mm-hmm. That's correct. I've, yeah.
Just tell us the sort of range of things that you do.
So I do a lot around child safety. I attend the home visits, I attend the family group planning. I attend the home visits, I attend the family group planning meetings, I attend any meetings. Sorry.
Just a little bit slower, thanks, Ms Bakino.
So I pretty much attend all the meetings and walk with the women through the journey as they process and manoeuvre child safety system. So in the investigations I'm a part of, and the IPP agreements and all that. So anything I can do to support and advocate for the women.
I should ask you this, the Health Service, we perform this role, what sort of service area do you deliver to?
So we service, we get people coming from Sherberg, so there's no kind of set boundaries as to, I mean, we work within Metro South, but, you know, we know that people come from Sherberg and are able to access our service, which is, yeah, fine. But I, yeah, we work within Metro South, so Logan down to Bow Desert, out to Redlands.
And in those contacts with child safety, are you in regular contact with the local Child Safety Service Centre?
Yeah, so there's different services throughout Brisbane that I've had a lot of interactions with. Some of our mums may live out at, you know, on the north side or at Ipswich Way. So, yeah, I do have, I have had contact with many different branches of child safety across Brisbane.
And when we talk about contact, is that on the phone, via email?
No, it's on the phone, a lot face-to-face. So when an investigation happens, I'm at the forefront with the women advocating and supporting. So there's a lot of phone calls and obviously meeting with the child safety officers. So it's quite an intense kind of process, as well as looking after the women through that process.
In that role that you perform with the women, advocating for them in the child safety area, just tell us how you assist women who have those type of disabilities, psychosocial disabilities, how you assist them to interact with the department?
Well, I guess I provide that intensive support, counselling, yarning, just strongly advocating for them, because all the women that I've dealt with that have gone through the system, it actually heightens their mental health. So from many occasions, I've had women wanting to just give up, you know, wanting to just commit suicide and just go, stuff it, you know, they can have my kids. They've already defeated before we've even started the fight. So I find part of my role is really empowering these women to fight the system that may not be built for them, but encouraging and supporting and counselling and checking in on them, whether it's daily, weekly, because it definitely impacts their mental health and heightens it severely.
Now, I want to ask you about the types of supports for women in these positions. So where the department has taken some action in relation to child of one of your clients, are you able to tell us about the type of supports that you're able to facilitate with the department?
Yep, so what tends to happen is a plan puts in place where the women may have to, you know, address if they have drug and alcohol issues, if they have domestic violent relationship, if they have mental health. And there's things that the department requires them to do in order to potentially get their children back in their care. So part of my role is to support them through that process. So helping them to access domestic violence services, counsellors, rehab if that's what they need to do, and looking at the domestic violence and, yeah, stuff like that. But often I find that the pressure put on Aboriginal women to do this, especially to address their mental health, can be re-traumatising for them. I don't think it has a, when these plans are put in place, I don't know how much culture has been impacted on these decisions. I think that's a massive component that the system forgets about. And I know from my 16 years' experience how important culture, country and connection and spirituality is to Aboriginal people. So when they do these plans and they make these women have to address this trauma, it's actually not acknowledging their resilience, nor is it acknowledging their cultural connection. So you're almost setting, you're almost setting the parent up for failure, in my opinion, from what I've witnessed and my 16 years of experience.
And just on the way in which culture is taken into account, are you able to tell us from your experience and observation, how is it factored in?
In my opinion, it's not factored in. As in, you know, say for example, part of the condition or the family, the plan is for the woman to access a mental health service. There are not many mental health services that are culturally appropriate for Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people, in my opinion, in Brisbane. So as a result, this woman is, has no option but to see a non-Indigenous psychologist, which can be re-traumatising if you look at history, can be re-traumatising for that woman. So I think the systems that we have in place don't acknowledge culture and the spirituality and the connection that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people have. I mean, it's a very westernised kind of plan that's put in place. And when it's put in place, the women I work with don't have the power to challenge it. So they have to agree to do what Child Safety wants them to do if they are to get their children back. And I've found in times that even when they do do what Child Safety wants, they do not get their children back. I'm actually going through a case at the moment like that, so it's quite, yeah.
You mentioned a couple of the different programmes or things that women might need to do as part of that process. Rehabilitation programmes is one you've mentioned. In relation to those and your clients, from your experience, is cultural consideration, culture a factor, which is part of what those recommended programmes?
No, I don't, no, I don't find that culture is acknowledged through any of the systems, and it's not. On the ground level, it doesn't happen. It might happen, might be a legislation up top that says, you know, you need to ensure it's culturally appropriate, but on the ground level, it's a very different story. Yeah, it's a very westernised model of care.
What about with parenting programmes?
There are very limited parenting programmes for Aboriginal families. And we've also got to acknowledge too the lack of resources available for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. We're underfunded in that area. And often when you try to refer to an Aboriginal organisation, there's quite a waitlist, like, it's not going to just happen overnight. So there's a lot of pressure on the already existing Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander programmes that are within Brisbane. But they are very limited, and over my 16 years, I've actually seen a lot of funding being pulled out of community organisations, which is sad, because it impacts the community, especially out at Inala.
Now, going back to your clients who have disability as an issue as well, are there, from your experience, disability supports or services and programmes through the department when Child Safety is involved, offered to the parents?
So from my opinion and what I've witnessed, is it can be very tokenistic. It can be, oh, here, we'll refer you to, you know, a programme, we've picked that box, it's done. They don't actually follow through or follow up, the referral might be put in place, but it's just a tick of a box, which is, it's not genuine and it's not authentic. I find that there's very limited support for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families going through the system. And often they'll look at me to almost do their dirty work for them, which, yeah, I don't do.
Just on that issue of the disability programmes, are there any programmes that are culturally appropriate and safe for First Nations parents?
I think there are organisations out at Inala that's available, but once again, it's lack of resources, not enough workers, not enough money put into it. So there are services out at Inala, but not often a worker's always available to take on caseloads.
And the clients that you advocate for, when these type of services or programmes are part of what they have to undertake, do they have a choice to which service provider to go to?
Sometimes they'll have a choice if they speak up, but quite often in meetings that I've been to, they're disempowered. So they'll just say yes, 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 because they're too fearful to speak up in that place. So they'll often might say something to me afterwards, and then I will advocate for the parent, which is often what happens.
Now, I want to ask you then about the, going back to the child safety cases that you've been involved with, what your observations have been, and your experience has been about having Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people from the department as part of that process to assist with identifying what's needed for a parent and their family?
Yeah, well, I can count on one hand the amount of times when there's been an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander representative within that meeting or within any interactions with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families. I've had a lot of interactions over the last four years, and like I said, I can count on one hand when then has been an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person.
Sorry, can I just ask you, when we're talking about a representative, an Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander representative, who is that person?
Well, there's generally, from my understanding, there's generally a person within each office that is Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander. And my understanding is they're meant to be involved in any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander family that comes to the attention of docs.
So that's the cases that you're talking about?
Yes, but very rarely is there an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person from Child Safety within the meetings. Definitely not at any of the home visits. So, and I think, if I can say, that sometimes those positions are just tokenistic, it's a tick of a box. I'm not sure whether those people's voices are heard within the system. But there's definitely many times when there's no cultural safety provided for the family that's going through the system, which is a failure by the system.
I should ask you this, Ms Bakino, you're talking about from your experience, particularly in your role within the programme, in the Inala Health Service, how many cases would you estimate you've been involved in, which have been in this advocating role for mothers, parents with disability in contact with Child Protection?
So over the four years, I've had about 10 families come into contact with Child Safety. Having said that, it could have been numerous times. So I've had many families where there's been a notification put in, an investigation has happened, and it's been closed down. Three months later, another investigation, so it's a continual cycle, a continual re-traumatising for the parents and the families. So it's 10 families, but it could have been, I know a family that we've had about five investigations. So it's, can be ongoing. Some families are, yeah, within six months at least, they can be in the investigation, yeah.
In terms of the things that you would recommend could be changed about the current system as you see it, are you able to tell us the type of things that you think should be a priority?
I think for me, I firmly believe in order to change a system, we need to look at where the power lies. I think it's important that we have Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people at power. That's from the top all the way down. And I think when I speak to that, you can't just have one Aboriginal person at the top and expect them to talk on behalf of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. It needs to be authentic and genuine, and it needs to be down throughout the system. To make a real change in the system, we need, power needs to lie with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
And what about in terms of the individual case officers at that level?
So the individual case officers, I think it's fundamental that there's anti-racism training, there's cultural competency training, as well as understanding the history of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. We need to know the true history in order to effectively, culturally and sensitively work with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. So at a ground level, from my experience and what I've witnessed, is many of the workers are not culturally appropriate. So there needs to be further training done for child safety officers.
And what about the supports, the availability of supports for your clients, particularly those with disability?
I think definitely there needs to be more resources put in for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander communities. There needs to be more people on the ground level, getting out in community, supporting these families and walking alongside them while they go on this journey. So I think there needs to be more workers on the ground, there's a lack of resources out there at the moment. And money keeps getting stripped away, and we're not going to be able to address racial disparities if we're not kind of putting the money where it needs to go, and that's on the ground level.
Yes, thank you, Ms Bakino, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Just wait one moment.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions you would like to put to Ms Bakino?
No, thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Atkinson?
No, thank you.
Commissioner McEwan?
Yes, I have just one question, thank you, for Ms Bakino. Ms Bakino, thank you. Look, you've described a lot of your, in terms of your evidence, your many interactions with the family. Have there been any time at all when there have been some successful stories? Or is there anything that you can point to that might work well in your experience? Thank you.
I mean, I think it's always a good outcome when an investigation is closed on a family. I think that's probably a success story when we're able to support the mother through the system to ensure that the investigation is closed, that another child is brought into care again.
So in other words, when there's less intervention perhaps from the system and where the family might be supported to be a family?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there needs to be, instead of removing the child and putting another Aboriginal child in care, we need to provide appropriate support to the families as they go, yeah, which doesn't often happen.
Thank you.
Ms Bakino, thank you very much for coming to the Commission and giving evidence. We appreciate both your statement and the oral evidence that you have given today, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr Crowley, yes, what is next, please?
Chair, we next have scheduled a short break, mid-morning break, and then after that, we'll be continuing with the next two witnesses between then and lunch.
So shall we say another 10-minute break?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, we'll adjourn then for 10 minutes.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr Crowley.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The next witness we have is Thelma Schwartz, and I can indicate that Mr Power will take this witness and also the next witness, Professor Higgins.
Yes, thank you, yes, Mr Power.
Chair, I call Thelma Caroline Schwartz, who is present in the Brisbane hearing room.
I'm just waiting for Ms Schwartz to appear on our screen. I'm just waiting for Ms. Schwartz to appear on our screen. Yes, thank you, Ms. Schwartz, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. Um, I will ask you, please, to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate to take either the oath or the affirmation as the case may be, thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz. Uh, Mr., Mr. Power will now ask you some questions, thank you.
Ms. Schwartz, could you tell the Commission your full name?
My name is Thelma Caroline Schwartz.
And have you prepared a 20-page statement dated, uh, 20 November 2020 for this commission?
Yes, I have.
And are the contents of that, uh, statement true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, they are.
And, uh, Commissioners, I seek to tender Ms. Schwartz's statement, which is Statement, uh, 0232 dot triple zero one dot triple zero one.
Yes, and do you want to give that an exhibit number?
Uh, yes, and, uh, the next exhibit number, I apologize, is...
I'll take a guess and say 8.5.
Thank you, uh, uh, um, uh, Chair, I think it's 8.6, I apologize.
Very good, all right, well, we'll mark the exhibit, uh, as Exhibit 8.6.
Ms. Schwartz, do you identify as a First Nations person?
Yes, Torres Strait Islander through my mother's line.
And since 2005, have you been the principal legal officer of Queensland Indigenous Family Violence Legal Service?
Yes, that's correct.
And is that known by the acronym, uh, QIFVLS, also pronounced Quifils?
That's right.
All right. Now, uh, I'll refer to it in evidence as Quifils. Um, and prior to becoming the principal legal officer of Quifils, uh, did you practice in a number of areas of law?
That's correct.
And what, what were those areas of law?
Uh, I practiced for a number of years as a criminal defence lawyer at the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Legal Service, Atzul's in Cairns. Uh, I practiced, uh, for nine and a half years in that capacity, representing Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander men, women and children across the Magistrates Court, the Children's Court, Children's Court of Queensland, the District Court, Supreme Court and the Queensland Court of Appeal. Uh, I've also had the benefit of practicing in, in commercial litigation for seven and a half years in both Northern Territory and Queensland, uh, with a practice, um, that was personal injuries, bankruptcy, uh, negligence, whether that's professional negligence, medical negligence, motor accidents. So very broad, general, um, litigation, uh, commercial practice.
And that commenced when you were admitted in 1999 in the Northern Territory?
That's correct.
And you were admitted to practice in Queensland in 2003?
That's correct.
Right. Now, is it correct that Quifils is one of only two community-controlled family violence prevention legal services for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people in Queensland?
That's correct. Our other sister organisation is based in Roma, the Aboriginal Family, uh, Legal Service.
Now, your statement, which has been tendered as an exhibit, goes through the very wide range of work that Quifils does. Um, but I want to turn, uh, to the child protection practice and in particular, uh, First Nations parents with disabilities. Now, uh, at paragraph 26 of your statement, your, your statement goes through the new cases, uh, that, uh, occurred during the last financial year, that is July 2019 to June 2020. And it records that, um, new child protection cases constituted 31.3% of your new cases, which was the highest percentage of the categories of any new legal cases. Um, now, could you just e- uh, expand on that and whether that is a new phenomenon? Um, with regard to that being the highest percentage, that is child percent, child protection of your work, or is that something that's occurred, uh, over time?
Um, in relation to paragraph 26 of my statement, uh, I started with Quifils in 2015. The predominant nature of our work has been in relation to domestic and family violence legal casework representation or family law casework representation. Uh, for that particular reporting period, for child protection matters to outrank both domestic and family violence matters and family law matters is a new phenomenon. It was the first time that I had seen it in my time at Quifils.
Right. Now, does Quifils keep data about, uh, clients that have a disability?
Unfortunately, no, it's not a specific funding requirement, uh, under our service level agreement with the National Indigenous Australians Agency. Um, we generally collect it, but it's not reported on to the funder.
And so that's in the, in the form of your internal file notes would record it, but not in terms of data collection for, uh, for reporting purposes?
That's correct.
Right. Based on your experience, um, can you say, uh, how many of, uh, of your First Nation clients have diagnosed or non-diagnosed disabilities?
It's been my experience that a high proportion of our clients will present to us with, um, the, um, sequelae of trauma. Uh, trauma being either physical trauma, um, from fleeing a physically violent relationship or the trauma that's associated, uh, that would probably be called post-traumatic stress disorder, um, which is undiagnosed. So these are the types of clients that we deal with on a day-to-day basis in my practice.
And what about the, your, uh, clients who are parents, who are having contact with the child protection system? Um, from your experience, what proportion of those parents were themselves children who had once grown up in the child protection system?
It's a sad reality of my practice, but a high proportion of those people would have been children themselves of the system. Um, and that seems to be a reflection that I've seen across my practice experience in criminal law practice, where I have seen and represented grandparents, adults and children who have all had connection with the child protection system, unfortunately.
And, uh, we'll come to it later, but is this, that, that experience over the course of your legal career and with Quifils led you to the view that there needs to be early intervention before problems emerge?
I absolutely agree, the focus needs to shift to early intervention, to see a shift away from tertiary responses. Um, that has been further amplified in the Family Matters Report of 2020. Um, our system is not working, it's completely, uh, inadequate to deal with. The over-representation that is continuing to rise, uh, in relation to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples' connection and intersection with the justice system, whether that's the criminal law justice system, the juvenile detention or juvenile youth justice system, um, and the, uh, the child protection system.
Now, at paragraph 30 of your statement, you use the term birth suite removals. Can you explain to the Commission what, what that means?
Uh, a birth suite removal, um, relates to a pregnant, uh, woman who is about to give birth and who has to go into hospital or into an area where they're awaiting to go to hospital, um, to physically give birth to their child. Um, it's an unfortunate, uh, area that I see quite commonly across all of my offices in Queensland, where we seem to have repeated contact with the department in relation to this practice.
Now, y- from your experience with Quifils, um, is this a rare phenomenon or is it something that occurs more commonly?
Um, unfortunately, it is quite a common occurrence. Only last week, I had an incident in my Cairns office, uh, where we were notified, uh, of a young mother who had travelled down from the Cape York, who'd recently given birth with a very new baby, staying in a halfway house to return back home. And the department had made their intentions known that they were going to remove that child. However, they wouldn't tell us at what time they wished to remove that child. So we had to play a game of cat and mouse to work out when we could actually get to Mackay-Rosey, the Aboriginal Community Controlled Hostel where she was staying, to actually sho- short-circuit and circumvent that removal. Uh, it is, it, it occurs, um, it's probably one of the more, um, I would call it a heinous practice. Um, and it's unfortunate that it's still continuing, it's been continuing since my time in 2015. And I don't see a decrease in its application by the department.
Now, y- you, at Quifils, have adopted a case management model, um, that is trying to address both legal and non-legal problems, um, with, uh, families and particularly women who are the victims of domestic violence. Um, in terms of the development of that holistic system, was that in any way connected with the observa- your observations, um, of birth suite removals?
Uh, our development of the case management model, which is spoken to in the body of my, um, statement, was as a direct consequence of birth suite removals that we saw occurring in the Rockhampton, Rockhampton Catchment area. I started in Quifils in 2015, we started working on that model in 2016. Um, and that model, um, we have grown in the context of the funding bucket we currently receive from the funder, we don't get anything additional for it. Um, we've developed it, it has been independently assessed by the Charles Darwin University, uh, when Minister, then Minister Nigel Scullion was the minister responsible for Family Violence Prevention Legal Services. Um, Charles Darwin University spoke to the need for this model, um, to be used, uh, across all of our sites. Um, unfortunately, uh, we haven't been able to get that funding across the line across all of our sites. And it operates only in Rockhampton and Mount Isa at this point in time.
And y- you've spoken about an evaluation report from, um, Charles Darwin, uh, University. Um, was that, um, a report commissioned by your agency or by the Commonwealth itself?
The report was commissioned by the then Department of Prime Minister and Cabinet. Um, we were funded under the Indigenous Australian stream, um, at that particular point when we were headed by then Minister, uh, Nigel Scullion. Um, it was commissioned into the overall effectiveness of family violence prevention legal services across Australia, of which there are 14, and Quifils is one here in Queensland.
Now, um, without going into detail, um, uh, what, what did that report say about the effectiveness of Quifils' model of, uh, early intervention through a case management model?
Effectively, we were on to something.
Okay. Um, and we, the Commission can make inquiries, but, uh, from your perspective, is that, uh, a report that you think would, uh, 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 help the Commission in an appreciation of the work that your organisation is doing?
I certainly do believe it will assist the Commission to see the value of the work that we do, that we have come up with as an Aboriginal Community Controlled Organisation, finding solutions for our people, with our people, uh, and driving the change that we want to see on the ground.
Now, you've mentioned, um, birth suite removals. Have you seen birth suite removals occurring with First Nation mothers with a disability?
Yes, I have.
And, um, what are your observations about how, um, that affected those women? And whether they were given, um, any assistance after the removal of their children?
I think the impact is further comba- compounded for a person with disability. There are access issues immediately, um, that a person with disability, uh, faces. It's further amplified, um, as a First Nations person. Um, I see a complete lack of hope, a complete lack of despair, uh, just wanting to give up and not engage with the system. Um, we haven't even got to trying to get this child back, to negotiate terms to have engagement. Um, but it is a system that is stacked against that individual from the outset. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but it is a bleak system, it is a system where there is no hope for an individual. Uh, and it, it traps people, um, into this cycle, uh, that they can't get out of or break free of, um.
And again, is that something that your case management model of legal and non-legal interventions tries to assist those people with?
Uh, the beauty of our case management model is that it builds on the self-efficacy and the self-determination of that individual to take back control, to take back some power, uh, and understanding, to address the drivers that have brought them into contact with the system in the first place, um, to really get them back and connect them. Um, let's say it's an issue of not having adequate housing, it's an issue of drugs and alcohol, it's an issue of family violence. How do we address this to support you, to take back control and make you safe, thereby your children safe? So it's a self-empowerment model, yes.
And why Quifils? Why not, um, some aspect of the, the broader government agencies? Why Quifils to perform that role?
If you're talking about Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, with respect, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people, Aboriginal Community Controlled organisations should be taking the lead in this discussion. Um, I believe that we've signed off a national partnership agreement on closing the gap, which is about building the capacity and strengths of our Aboriginal Community Controlled organisations. Um, as I've said before, we have the solutions to our problems. Fund us. It is quite clear, uh, through the numerous reports that we have been through in this state and across the country, of the failings of the child protection system, let alone the justice system as a whole, in relation to the over-representation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people as a whole. So we've come up with a way to deal with this and take back an aspect of control, um, as opposed to the paternalistic, uh, way the system has dealt with and treated Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
Moving to a, a slightly different topic, at paragraph 31 of your statement, um, your statement contrasts the way that First Nation mothers who've been the victim of violence are treated when firstly they're in the domestic violence, domestic and family violence setting, as opposed to when the same women are in the child protection system. Could you e- e- explain to the Commission what the differences in treatment are in those two systems?
Ultimately, the child protection system is adversarial and inquisitorial. Um, a woman, and it is gendered, who enters the domestic and family violence system, given that the outcomes and supports that have been implemented from the Not Now, Not Ever report, is fully supported. Um, there are support mechanisms, you have high-risk teams, you've got a whole wraparound, um, approach to supporting her flee, uh, that violent relationship and move on and to feel safe with her children. Now, a notification would have been made that there was domestic violence, that she was fleeing. That notification is then sent to the child protection system, particularly where there are children involved. The department will then get in, in that child protection continuum. And will say, well, hang on a minute, we're actually going to now start the process to remove your children because you failed to protect this child, this is a child in need of protection. You have exposed that child to domestic and family violence. So you can see that by coming forward and making the disclosure that you've been a victim, which is all of this advertising and the whole genesis of the Not Now, Not Ever report, this is now used as a catch 22 for this mother, um, and used against her to remove her kids.
And coming then to, um, First Nations parents with a disability, um, from your, uh, experience, how do they tend to come into contact with the child protection system?
Uh, I believe I've spoken to that in my state- I believe I've spoken to that in my statement, and that would be through contact with the police, domestic violence incident reports, and medical presentations at clinics and the hospital.
And so what you've just said about First Nations women generally being treated very differently in the domestic and family violence setting as opposed to child protection setting, does that apply? Is that the same or different with First Nations women with disabilities in those two systems?
It's probably further amplified for a First Nations woman with a disability, given that she's already on the back foot because of her disability. And that is, there's already that limitation on access to justice. So you then reach out to access supports, protective supports through the domestic violence system, which you then get in the form of an order being made. But it's formed the basis for the grounds for the removal of child and child protection intervention, on the other hand.
And so you've said formed the basis of that child protection intervention. From when you became the principal legal officer with Quiffls in 2015 through to now, in terms of the reports that are prepared, what is the expression of domestic violence being used as a measure of risk to children? Is it the same in 2015 to now, or is it in any way different?
When I first started in 2015, it was quite common to be put into the 600-page affidavit material that the basis for the removal of a child was because the mother had failed to protect the child, given she had exposed them to domestic and family violence. That would be the sole reason we would see across all of my offices for children being removed. Another one of the key bases that would have been tied in with the removal was the fact that the mother had been herself a child within the Child Protection System. Those were the two key grounds for removal. And that was 2015. And obviously, I've said to this commission that led to us creating a case management model to deal with what we were seeing happening with the department. Now, I'm seeing with a shift since the amendments came in in 2017 to our legislation here, the choice of words used for removals has become a bit more sophisticated. We're not explicitly saying, well, we're removing your children because of your exposing the child to domestic and family violence. And I think that's because of the involvement of the official solicitor, the Director of Child Protection Litigation. But when you dig down and analyse the evidence within the affidavits, it still comes down to exposure to domestic and family violence. You're a child yourself who's been through the Child Protection System.
Now, Quiffls has, in part, some of its offices, this case management system. Is it, what is your experience about whether the Child Protection Agencies welcome a First Nation mother having support from Quiffls at an early time?
It was only about two weeks ago that I had a discussion with probably on-the-ground managers of a child safety office in one of our catchment areas, I won't say where, who basically said to me that my child protection or my child case management model was a duplication of existing on the ground services. What was the reason or why was the reason they should be involved with Quiffls? And I kind of sat there and thought, hang on a minute. We've got these wonderful Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child placement principles within the Act. I thought participation would have been key to this. And it was quite an adversarial conversation, which is not what I wanted, because our idea is actually to engage proactively with the department because there is a crisis on our hand. Their whole attitude and that discussion with me was on the basis that there is nothing wrong with the department. There are no failings within this department. And I remember saying, that's funny, given the recent report into the death of Mason Jet Lee and the amendment that was pushed through in relation to permanency and the Queensland Government's commitment to implementing the further recommendations. So it was quite a hostile discussion from that particular department, unfortunately, in that region. And I'm absolutely gobsmacked because some of the other regions where we do work, we've managed, my teams on the ground have managed to establish fruitful and productive relationships with individuals within the offices. And we're getting those referrals at the investigation and assessment phase or prior to the investigation and notification stage that we have a family. We've actually referred them to you, so you can have a discussion about what it is that we want to do. And I have received one phone call myself directly because I've been pushing in this space to be early involved, where I've had a woman contact me directly saying they've told me to call you. Like, great, I'll put you in contact with the right office.
And so what you've just said there is that in certain areas, certain regions, there is, I suppose, a person-to-person relationship with people within Child Protection or Child Safety who have seen the value of what you're doing and made those personal connections. What do you think should be done across the board in terms of Aboriginal-controlled community organisations and child safety and the timing of involvement?
I think this probably ties to my recommendations that I'd like to see occur. One of the key things that I'm calling for is, and it's consistent with our submissions and our national forum submissions, is a child protection notification scheme where we are notified, very similar to the custody notification scheme, as soon as an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person comes into contact with the department, we're notified or the person is given the choice of a legal service provider that can assist them if they're not comfortable with an Aboriginal community-controlled one.
And that reference to custody was, from your experience with ATSELs, where an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander person is in police custody, there's an obligation to notify ATSELs that there is an Aboriginal person who is in custody?
That's correct. I think I've been very vocal in these submissions that I've referenced in my witness statement. This is not something that is new. This is something that we've been saying and I have been saying as well as my CEO for many years about where we build in these systems. It should be statutorily built in as well as a statutory onus placed on the department to take active efforts to actually assist families succeed with programmes, instead of having this sole focus on intervention and removal, which has been the practical reality in my practice.
So paragraph 48 of your statement deals with what Quiffls and organisations like it can do if there's involvement in an early stage. Could you just speak to that so that we can understand what are the key things that early intervention can achieve in a family protection, a child and family protection scenario?
One of the key things that we see still in this space is parents not understanding what it means to be engaged with the department. When the department say, you need to do a programme, well, what does it mean if I don't do that programme? What does it mean if I only do it halfway and then something comes up and I don't engage? Now, the department aren't going to disclose to that family. Well, it's going to then lead to an intervention occurring. At no point in time do they then think that this person needs to go off and get some independent advice. I know that we've got the independent person in theory in practice here in Queensland. It's not being utilised. And it's being underutilised, which is consistent with our submissions in a number of forums to the department and the minister responsible. This is about people understanding, it's like a contract. What am I getting involved with and what are the consequences if I breach? Because it's not understanding. Another aspect that we see still occurring unfortunately is gratuitous concurrence. Yeah, I just did it because they're the authority figure. I said I would do it, but I knew I couldn't do it. No one explained to me what that meant.
And in terms of that explanation to a First Nations person and assistance with negotiating with the Child Protection System, why is an Aboriginal-controlled community organisation important to do that?
We're culturally safe. We know our people. We should be leading the way in these discussions with respect. For too long, we have sat at the back. And I think especially with the shift in focus with our National Partnership Agreement on Closing the Gap, we actually should be preference. We've been working on the base level, on the ground level for so long within our communities. We know our communities. We should actually be given a chance to develop systems and work through our outcomes with our people. I'm tired of seeing a one-size-fits-all approach. It doesn't work. How many times you say that, but still they insist on a one-size-fits-all because it fits quite nicely with an economic or a budgetary framework to deliver.
Okay. And by that, do you mean it's so expensive to have children out of home care that things being done early is in fact economically better?
I think if you have a look at the Family Matters Report 2020, and I'm obviously referencing quite a lot because it was released, I believe, last week, you'll see the amount of expenditure that is spent on tertiary responses. It's exponential. If we were to divest some of that money at that tertiary response end into primary intervention and prevention, we could actually circumvent what we're seeing at the back end, which is an over-representation. I believe the Family Matters Report has stated quite openly, if there isn't a change in trajectory, there's going to be an increase, a further increase, a doubling of numbers by 2029 in terms of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in out-of-home care.
Thank you. Now, paragraphs 45 to 47 of your statement go to problems that arise when Quiffls or organisations like it are brought into the picture only at a very late stage. So, but that's dealt with in your report. So I wanted to deal with just one last issue. And that is with regard to kinship placements, which you've touched on. And at paragraph 58 of your statement, you discuss the problem of kinship placement and the blue card requirements for such placements. Now, can you expand on that for the commission as to what the issues are about blue card requirements for First Nations people?
So normally to hold a blue card, there are a number of disqualifying offences under the Act. They are related to violence. And what we will see in our communities is unfortunately, a number of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people would have come before the criminal justice system and have criminal histories that have recordings for violent offences, not just breaches or contraventions of domestic and family violence orders or sexual offending. So if you've just got a history where you might have been a young lad, you got into a bit of trouble and you've accrued a history of violent offending, that in theory will then be used as a disqualifying offence for you to hold or have a positive notice for a blue card, which means that you can't be considered as a kinship carer for a child within community.
You can apply to QCAT though and have that requirement removed, sorry, the blue card overridden. Why can't that occur?
That's correct. You certainly can. We do assist families in that context. What becomes problematic is the time that QCAT will take to make a determination. And then you've got the child protection proceedings running, steamrolling down the other end. So it will eliminate a potential class of kinship carer. And what we then see, particularly in my Gulf communities, children being removed from home base, taken to a community they have no connection to and placed with carers who are normally non-Indigenous. So I'm at a bit of a loss, given our Human Rights Act placing the importance of connection to culture, land, values. I've got a complete quandary here and the expectation will be that I run that through the Human Rights Commission for some form of determination, but...
And so obviously enough, the blue card is an important safety feature. Is there a way around it, in your view, to try and not involve in litigation, whether case litigation or test case litigation? Is there a way around that to try and solve that catch 22 situation?
I believe that would be consistent with our calls as a member of the National Family Violence Prevention Legal Forum and as an Aboriginal community-controlled organisation, the establishment of Aboriginal child commissioners. With a right and overview of blue cards, I don't have any faith in the department having any ability to have a look at this. I don't believe they're independent enough, not under its current structure. I would prefer to see that sitting completely separate and independently from the department.
Now, your statement closes with recommendations made from your long experience, and there are paragraphs 63 to 68. I won't go through those, but was there any closing message in your oral evidence that you wanted to communicate to the commission?
I think people generally have a sense of inquiry and report fatigue in relation to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander issues particularly. You know, I really hope that some systemic reform comes out of this and particularly in the state of Queensland in relation to the state of our child protection system. It is a system in crisis. I can't accept that it is a system that is not broken, that does not require to be fixed. I look at the deaths of Mason Lee. I look at the deaths of young Willow, that's still being investigated. The two young boys recently here in Brisbane who were found living in the conditions that they were. It is time to change what we're doing. I cannot accept that we, in a modern society, cannot change trajectories, particularly the appalling trajectory in relation to out-of-home care and over-representation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people.
Thank you. Chair, that's the evidence in chief, subject to questions from the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr Power. Ms Schwartz, can you tell me or tell the commission about the Queensland First Children and Families Board? What does that do?
That's a very good question. It's not one that I've had a lot of contact with.
Oh, well, if you don't know, that's fine. There is, or there will be some evidence that that can assist the elders from across Queensland and was designed perhaps to address some of the issues you have identified. I just wondered if you were familiar with it.
No, Chair. It's not an organisation that we've had a lot of dealings to deal with, unfortunately, if it is here to proactively assist. And I think that probably with respect shows some of the very evident gaps in Queensland.
And what about the First Nations Council? Do you know about that?
I believe I have. I believe I've seen reference material, but no direct engagement.
Okay. I think we're going to be told that there were 121 recommendations made by the Queensland Child Protection Commission of Inquiry in 2012, all of which were accepted, 115 completely and six in principle, I think. And that since 2015, there have been further reviews with a total of 200 further recommendations. It does sound as though there have been some fairly concentrated attempts in Queensland to improve the system and address some of the issues you have identified. I'm just wondering what your perspective is on why apparently these recommendations, these recommendations, many of which are said to have been implemented, haven't changed the system sufficiently in your view?
Thank you, Chair. I think this really comes back with respect to a complete requirement for an overhaul of the department itself. We have had very positive engagements with the then Minister Minister Farmer and senior executive directors of her then department in relation to how to better work with the department and engage. Unfortunately, what we see quite consistently across all of my offices is a complete difference in practice on the ground. It's not being affected or implemented. And we see that quite regularly in relation to the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander child placement principles, which aren't implemented or affected uniformly across Queensland.
You've referred to your case management approach. Has there been an assessment or evaluation of the case management approach in terms of its effect on children being, First Nations children being taken into the child protection system?
It was independently evaluated by the Charles Darwin University. I haven't reviewed it recently to see that particular aspect of it. One of the key recommendations that came out of it was we were recommended as an organisation to become specialist child, a specialist child protection organisation as well as a speciality in domestic and family violence.
Yeah. But as far as you know, there has not been an assessment to determine whether your approach has led to a reduction in the number of children who have been placed into the child protection system?
No, we certainly didn't do that, given we started in 2016.
Yes, thank you very much. I'll ask Commissioner Mason if she has a new question.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Ms. Schwartz, for your evidence today. So the organisation that you're the principal legal officer of, the Queensland Indigenous Family Violence Legal Services, a member of the national peak body. So therefore, at a jurisdictional level, it's connected to national conversations and also potential solutions across the board. And you talked about seeing the intersection of women with child protection, domestic and family violence, they being Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander women and families, and also the intersection of disability in the work that you do. Talked about this case management approach. I've written in my notes a primary care case management approach at the primary level. As you were saying, not so much at the tertiary level, where that concentration should be. And you also mentioned the national agreement recently finalised with the peak Aboriginal organisations, with that National Partnership, and all Australian governments. So I've said all that to come to this question. In your view, with that level of capability of understanding the issues, and you've mentioned that these are not new solutions, what would you say to this Royal Commission around escalating and elevating and escalating this solution? Because this primary care to women and families needing cultural support as well as legal support during those primary stages of contact with the child protection system particularly, and families, women with disability. If we don't do the changes now, you've talked about where we could be in ten years' time in terms of the numbers. So I acknowledge you that there's been so much effort and advocacy, but we don't seem to have the transformation of being heard and then the structural changes being made. So do you see hope in the new, the national agreement? Or the work of your peak organisation? Does the work need to happen at a jurisdictional level? What's your feeling? What's your sense of what's possible in the next few years?
I think we're at a very exciting position for change. Quifles is a Queensland state peak feeding into the Closing the Gap bodies who fed into the overarching agreement. So as a state peak here in Queensland, we are coming together with the other nominated state peaks here to work out what the implementation plan should look like, particularly in relation to the target to reduce the amount of children coming into contact with the child protection system. But I think it was twenty forty-five from memory, or twenty, I know it's by forty-five percent, sorry. It is an exciting time. I think there needs to be a consistent adoption of policy frameworks, not only in Queensland and other states, but actually led by the Commonwealth with an overarching framework. We need to see how this will tie in, particularly to embed and implement the National Partnership Agreement on Closing the Gap. We're talking about changing wellbeing outcomes. Justice and child protection is one bit of that. But this is a life outcome for an Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander person and improving life expectancy and what that looks like. So I am buoyed by a sense of hope, given what's happened at a national level. I am losing hope, given what I see on a day-to-day basis here in the state of Queensland in relation to child protection. It's a continuous fight with the same messaging. And I come back to that definition of insanity. How can you expect change if you keep doing the same thing over and over again? That's all we do here. And seriously, something needs to change. I don't know how many more reports you need to show you deficiencies and gaps. We need to do things differently. We need to do things better. And let us lead the way as an Aboriginal community-controlled org.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Yes, Ms. Schwartz, thanks for your evidence. Before you were talking about birth sweet removals, you mentioned generations of people are subject to child protection or child removal, grandparents, parents, and then their children. And I think you mentioned in passing in the juvenile justice and adult criminal justice system. And do you see in your experience a link between children in the child protection or child removal system and then graduating to juvenile justice and adult imprisonment?
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Yes, there is a clear link. I've seen that throughout my practice, unfortunately. And you can see that highlighted quite recently in the Queensland Productivity Commission Report on recidivism and imprisonment, where there's a very detailed timeline, unfortunately. It is a sad reality. I have represented children in the children's court who have been very little, who have been in contact with children of the system. Those children then have gone on to keep offending. And then when they turned seventeen, eighteen, I represented them as adults. And, you know, saw them go through the plethora of orders until those children went to adult jail.
So is part of the solution for closing the gap on imprisonment rates, changing the rate of child removal?
Yes, they're all connected in my respectful submission. Everything here is connected. You can't with respect view this in a silo because it flows like a river. They are little jigsaw pieces that link. And this has been one of the frustrations with how departments operate. They operate with the blinkers on, with siloed vision. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McKeon?
No, thank you.
Ms. Schwartz, thank you very much for your evidence today, for your detailed statement and for your insights. We're most grateful to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Power?
Thank you, Chair. Chair, the next witness is Professor Daryl Higgins, who will be appearing via video link. And he should be brought into the system shortly.
Thank you.
Whilst that is occurring...
We'll just wait a moment and see if Professor Higgins appears on our screen. Someone's holding up ten fingers. I don't know whether that means ten seconds, ten minutes or ten hours, but ah.
Sweet. We have, no, there, yes, Chair, Professor Higgins.
We now have Professor Higgins. Do you can hear us, Professor Higgins?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming to give evidence, albeit remotely. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of Commissioner Atkinson's associate, she will ask you to take either the oath or the affirmation, as the case may be. Thank you.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Professor Higgins. Now, Mr. Power will ask you some questions from our Brisbane hearing room.
Chair, if I can deal firstly with the statements of Professor Higgins. Commissioners, you'll find a copy of the statement in tender bundle F at tab one. I seek to tender this statement into evidence to be marked as eight point seven. The material that is annexed to this statement is at tender bundle part F, tabs two to twenty-seven. Now, I asked to tender that material into evidence to be marked as exhibits eight point seven point one to eight point seven point twenty-six. That statement...
That can be done, thank you, yes.
Thank you. And that statement is dated the twelfth of November. Professor Higgins has also provided an addendum statement dated twenty-two November 2020. That is part F of the tender bundle at tab twenty-eight. And it has annexes which are at tabs twenty-nine to thirty-three. I ask that the addendum statement and its annexes be tended as exhibits eight point seven point twenty-seven to eight point seven point thirty-two.
Yes, that can be done as well, thank you.
Thank you. Professor Higgins, could you tell the Commission your full name?
Daryl John Higgins.
And the statements that I've just referred to, a twenty-four-page statement and a sixteen-page addendum statement, are those statements true and correct to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes, they are.
Now, you are presently a professor and director of the Institute of Child Protection Studies at the Australian Catholic University, having been appointed to that position in 2017?
That's correct.
Right. And prior to that time, from 2011 till 2017, were you the deputy director of, deputy director brackets, research of the Australian Institute of Family Studies?
Yes.
Now, could you just describe to the Commission, what is the present model across all state and territory jurisdictions of child protection in Australia?
Thank you, yes. In Australia, there is a lot of commonality between the models that we have in each state and territory in terms of what governments fund and operate to protect children. And it's what I would call, and many researchers and analysts in this space would call, a reactive model that's based on risks. So assessment of risks and responding to those risks. So it would fall within what we would call a tertiary response. Once harm has already happened or when there are very high risks that meet the threshold for intervening from a state perspective, so meets the guidelines, sorry, meets the state or territory legislative threshold for intervening, that those systems come into play.
And if I can, oh, sorry, I was going to say, is it corrected? You've done a chart which illustrates those things. And if I could ask that zero zero five two point triple zero three point zero zero one be placed on the screen? And... And, sorry, I was going to say, is this is a chart that you've prepared showing primary prevention, secondary prevention and tertiary prevention?
That's correct. And really, the state government and territory government statutory systems fall into the tertiary prevention, both the management of risks and obviously protecting children once harm has already occurred, but also the very intensive kind of services and supports that are offered to address the needs of children when they've been harmed, but also to address those families where there are high risks. So for example, Safe Care, you'll see on the bottom there, is an example of those programmes where families have already come in contact with, have been notified to a statutory child protection department. That's an evidence-based programme for trying to address those parenting deficiencies or the needs of parents who have already come in contact with a statutory system.
Now, we're going to hear from you develop this. But where should the focus of money and time be in terms of a successful child protection system?
Well, I very strongly believe that a successful child protection system or systems can only be put in place when we actually have interconnections based on a public health model of prevention. So putting the majority of the funding and the effort and investment into primary prevention activities. And you can see from this chart the kind of characteristics of those primary prevention activities need to be ones that are directed towards, you know, the whole of the population, ones that are not necessarily based on high levels of risk. And they are lower in effort and cost, but they're also more highly accessible to families because they're not stigmatising. And the way in which they are best delivered is through universal service delivery platforms. So to be blunt, not through a statutory child protection agency, which is often quite a stigmatising engagement for many children and families who are experiencing need.
You've mentioned stigma of engagement with the statutory child protection models. From the work you've done, how does the present system affect First Nation parents in particular?
I think it's particularly problematic for First Nations parents because not only is there that stigma of I'm being seen as being deficient in some way in terms of my parenting skills and capability in order to be, to come to the attention of a statutory child protection service, or even to be referred to some of those intensive family support programmes that many statutory services run and refer families that don't yet meet the threshold for child removal, but they recognise that the family is in need and there's a support that's required. But I think the additional challenge that First Nations parents have is of course the legacy of past removal practices. So the stolen generations and the inherent racism that many First Nations parents encounter with government agencies in seeking services, that all of that comes to mind for many parents.
Now, in your statement, you've mentioned that some European systems are better focused on primary prevention. Can you give an example of such a system?
Yes, one of the examples that I give in my witness statement is of Scotland, where they have a programme in place called Getting It Right For Every Child. So that acronym is GURFEC, Getting It Right For Every Child. And the idea behind that is that supports for families are delivered not through the statutory system per se, but through those community agencies that are already engaging with families and with their children. Most importantly, within that model, there is a lead professional called a, you know, a named individual who has responsibility for that family and particularly coordinating where there might be a greater level of need and therefore services to interconnect with that child and that family. So for example... So, for example, a family that might have a child with disability, it might be the local pediatrician who ends up being the named individual to coordinate responses. Where it's a child of a parent with disability, it could be a disability support agency that might be the one who has that contact point. And as the child develops and moves through the kind of systems, so, for example, might be engaging with early childhood education or with school systems, that named person might shift to someone within that mainstream system. The point being that there's coordination and that there's non-stigmatizing contact, and most importantly, that it's in place for all children, not just for a named subgroup who are seen as being high-risk and therefore requiring a different kind of response, but tailoring can occur within the service responses that that named person coordinates in order to meet the level of need of all families.
And you've dealt with that at paragraphs 46 to 51 of your addendum statement. Has that Scottish system been in place long enough for there to be research done on its effectiveness of avoiding children going into out-of-home care in Scotland?
I don't believe that it has. I think there is some limited findings because it has only been in place since 2014, when the legislation was... Of course, you know that there's a significant lag time between legislation being implemented, policies being delivered on the ground, and then, of course, being able to see those changes following through. And, of course, the time that's needed to be taken for research. So, to the best of my knowledge, there isn't a current comprehensive outcomes evaluation for that program. But I am aware that research that is available, looking at international comparisons of child protection systems, does point to this feature being one of the lead examples in the UK of what a public health approach should be like to support for children's wellbeing.
Can I ask if you have, have you studied the Scottish system in Scotland itself, or you're basing this upon what you have read about the system?
Yeah, thank you. No, I haven't, I haven't been to Scotland to study the system. I'm basing it from the available research, but also from some work that I did in support of the scoping of the Their Futures Matter Access Redesign System. And so I worked closely with the team at TFM. And they did a lot of background checking, including having some personal communication with key contacts in Scotland. So I didn't do that personally, but I directed that work from the TFM team as part of their analysis of what could be important design features moving forward for New South Wales under their proposed TFM model.
Is the Scottish system compulsory in the sense that everyone, every family that gives birth to a child is required to have a person such as a pediatrician or social worker allocated to them for this purpose?
My understanding is that it's not so much that it's compulsory from the family's point of view because no one would compel them to engage with those services in that particular way, but more that it is compulsory from the other side that services have to take all reasonable efforts to allocate that particular person. So whether the services are taken up and engaged with is a separate matter.
But presumably, the family has to be told that someone has been allocated to be there?
Yes, I presume so.
Hmm. All right. Thank you.
And, sorry, Commissioner Atkinson here. Are you aware that in Scotland, for a long time, they've regarded juvenile justice as a problem of the welfare of the child rather than criminal offending?
Yes, and I think that that's why Scotland is kind of put forward as one of the leading examples within the United Kingdom because they take a very child rights focus to this work and they see the interconnection as we should be doing in Australia between the youth justice and the statutory out-of-home care system, where there's a very high level of overlap in terms of children. And if you want to apply a prevention lens, many of the same kinds of activities that you would want to put in place in order to reduce the likelihood of children being removed from their birth families are the same kinds of supports and interventions that you would want to put in place in order to reduce the likelihood of children and young people coming in contact with youth justice systems. So similar investment for very common overlapping outcomes.
Chair, I have approximately 15 minutes more questions for Professor Higgins. And then Ms. Furness SC has a request to ask some questions, which we estimate subject to leave will take about 10 minutes, so 25 minutes in total. Chair, would you prefer to break for lunch now or to continue for that approximately 25 minutes?
Well, I think that unless we have evidence that everybody has consumed enough to keep them comfortable, we should probably make, break for lunch so as to preserve wellbeing among all of those participating. And so let us then adjourn for lunch. That means, I'm afraid, Professor Higgins, you'll need to come back. I'm sorry for the break in giving evidence. But we were planning, I think, according to a timetable that I've seen, of having lunch for one hour. Does that, is that satisfactory, or do you want that time reduced?
Resume at 1.30?
Set to 1.35 now. Sorry.
Chair, if you can resume at 1.30 Brisbane time?
Yes. Chair, could we resume at 1.30 Brisbane time?
Yes, we can resume at 1.30 Brisbane time, and that is 2.30 Sydney time. So we'll adjourn until then, then resume with Professor Higgins evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Mr. Power.
Chair, could we resume with Professor Daryl Higgins giving evidence by video link?
Yes, we can. Thank you. This time, five fingers have gone up. Now Professor Higgins appears on the screen. Within the five finger.
Professor Higgins, we concluded with a discussion of the Scottish system of a focus on primary prevention. Are there examples of primary prevention programs operating in the Australian system?
I think there are, but there's a lot more investment in secondary services. So ones that have a targeted, if you like, population group that they're trying to service rather than providing supports to all. And so that's where a lot more of our focus in terms of investment from a government perspective in particular is, you know, if we're thinking about primary prevention activities, that's really the ones that are located in, you know, schools, early childhood centers, health clinics, you know, maternal and child health services, and should really actually be business as usual for those organizations. But unfortunately, we don't have, in my view, a joined-up system that child abuse and neglect prevention and other primary prevention activities are really based in those situations. But I can give some examples, if you would like, of some of those more intensive secondary services that we have operating that I think are somewhat akin to the kind of supports that are a key feature of the Scottish Getting It Right For Every Child model.
Yes, if you could do that.
Yeah, so one example that I was involved with conducting an interim evaluation two years in for is the Victorian system called Cradle to Kinder. So it is an intensive family court model on referral from child protection. So that's the caveat. I think that it's a very strong limitation of it and certainly doesn't meet the requirements for being a primary prevention activity. But for what it is trying to do, which is dealing with higher-risk families that have already come to the attention, i.e. been referred to the Statutory Child Protection Service, it's a really great model. What the key feature from our research, it was having a lead worker who really developed a positive relationship with the family through things like home visits, spending time actually with the family, often it was the mother, and would, you know, play with the child and therefore have opportunities to kind of model what good parenting might be. And of course, if we, if we had an integrated theory of change about how to prevent child abuse and neglect in Australia, one of the things that should identify, of course, is the key role of parenting skills and capability. And some of the target groups for getting into the Cradle to Kinder program are young people, young parents who have themselves been in care, who are Aboriginal, a Torres Strait Islander, who have disability, or who have other high levels of need as determined by the criteria set by the HHS. But it's that really long-term engagement, the positive trust that's built up between the individual worker and the family, and particularly the practical support that is provided through brokerage funds. So if the thing that's stopping that mum from being able to, for example, go and undertake some training, so they might already have got a priority place at childcare, but, you know, is having difficulty getting to training. And maybe it's an issue to do with, you know, not having a PRAM to be able to get out of the house easily or not having funds to purchase a particular thing. So having that discretionary money in order to be able to meet the very basic needs of families experiencing high levels of vulnerability was just some of the examples of key features of that program that were positive.
And that fits with the holistic view of how a family deals with a number of government agencies and having somebody who can assist them through that maze?
Yes, but even more than just assisting them in getting services from others, they actually kind of are doing therapeutic work themselves with the family. Like I said, being able to kind of model those, you know, positive parenting behaviors and provide, using a strengths-based model. So in other words, not, you know, criticizing for the negative things, but actually being able to observe and praise the parent for, you know, for the positive work that they are doing, which is something that's often missing when we just simply have a case management approach, where there's not that kind of therapeutic positive relationship and trust building that goes on between a worker and the client.
And at paragraphs 41 to 45 of your addendum statement, you describe a less intensive primary prevention program called Sing and Grow. Now, very briefly, could you explain how that less intensive program would work in an ideal system of primary prevention and connection to services?
I think it's a good example of primary prevention because it doesn't, unlike, you know, Cradle to Kinder and all of those, you know, important and necessary intensive secondary services, it doesn't have the kind of selection criteria, and it doesn't have to be accessed because you have already come in touch with the child protection system. Of course, the program and the skill set can be deployed there, but in fact, it's a program that can be available to all parents. And I understand from colleagues in the Sing and Grow program that it is able to be and in fact has been used and adapted with First Nations communities and adapting the kind of repertoire that they use with their songs to including Indigenous languages and in consultation, of course, with local elders to get appropriate permissions for doing so. But the important thing is that it is a direct engagement with parents to teach parenting skills relating to child development, how to interact appropriately with your child depending on their age, and teaching really practical skills.
And part of your statement deals with them assisting with reunification through programs related to Sing and Grow.
That's right. So it's not necessarily the standard way the Sing and Grow is deployed, but it has been funded by government in order to play that role of supporting contact between parents and their children, where children have been removed through the child protection system. So rather than just expecting parents to spend an hour a week or an hour a fortnight with no support, this is a structured way that parents spend time with children who've been removed from their care in order to build that positive relationship that they might otherwise not have opportunities to do. And obviously, to address some of the things that were seen as inadequate and the reasons for their removal in the first place, that they weren't providing appropriate care and didn't necessarily have the appropriate parenting skills. So it's being deployed to address those very practical needs and to develop skills.
How would primary prevention of child maltreatment work in a First Nations context?
I think the first and most important thing to say is that for it to work for First Nations parents, it really does need to be delivered within a cultural context. And of course, the go-to there is, of course, for Aboriginal community-controlled organizations to really have responsibility and to be empowered to deliver those kind of supports and services. They are the ones who know their own community. They have the kind of cultural authority to be able to speak on behalf of their community and can identify what are the things that are needed. And there's lots of examples. I was one of the people responsible for running the Closing the Gap Clearing House, which looked at all of the evidence in relation to what is needed in order to promote safety in communities, including prevention of child abuse and neglect. And that was really the key recommendation that we made through all of that work, is that it has to be community development approaches based on empowerment of local Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community to lead that.
Professor Higgins, in paragraph 13 of your addendum statement, you say that an example of a community development approach is an intended pilot program of delegated statutory child protection functions to First Nations community-controlled child protection bodies in Queensland. What's that a reference to?
That's a reference to the legislative reforms that have gone on in Queensland in order to address the problems, if you like, of over-representation of children and young people in the out-of-home care system. So this is not about primary prevention or even secondary interventions. This is about tertiary interventions, once children have already been notified to the department, that rather than the government directly itself responding and being responsible for, you know, risk assessment and decisions around placement or removal, or in fact, intensive supports and work with those families in order for children to remain safely at home or engage in processes such as, you know, family group decision-making, et cetera, to understand what are the challenges and what are the supports that are needed, that that process can, under Queensland legislation, be delegated to an Aboriginal community-controlled organization. So that's what that delegated authority is referring to.
Do you happen to know which provision that is in the Act?
Sorry, I need to take that on notice. I have been working with the peak body in Queensland, the Queensland Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Protection Peak, to conduct an action research program in supporting their members exercising those delegated authorities.
Thank you. Well, that's all right. We can find that out ourselves. Thank you.
It's probably important to say that there are a range of different delegations, not just one delegation, and different agencies are choosing to exercise different delegations depending on their capacity and their level of maturity as an organization in exercising those kind of functions.
Turning then to First Nations parents with disabilities. Within a primary prevention and community development of responses, what adjustments and changes in approaches would be needed to assist First Nation parents with disabilities? be needed to assist First Nation parents with disabilities?
I think it really depends on the nature of the disability and therefore the level of need and support that different parents might have. And that's why I am a very strong advocate of the kind of public health approach to primary prevention, because the agencies and support services that families where parents have disability might already be engaging with, it could be a local GP or in a First Nations context, probably more likely to be an Aboriginal community-controlled health organisation, they are the ones that are going to be able to understand what the nature of the disability and the challenge that that family has, and what supports might need to be wrapped around or adjusted. The unfortunate thing is when you get to the statutory system trying to respond, you end up with the agencies who are working with them still even coming under the obligation to have mandatory reporting. And I think what's much more important in this context is actually mandatory service responses and how we make reasonable adjustments in the kind of supports that are available to First Nations parents with disability to assist them in their task of parenting, whether it's practical things like helping them get to a childcare centre or to school, or whether it might be adaptation of learning materials to support them in their parenting role. For example, I'm familiar with a widely available parenting programme called Triple P that has worked with Indigenous communities to develop an Indigenous-specific version of group Triple P that meets the kind of cultural needs. So it's those kind of adaptations, both from a disability lens and from a cultural lens, that I think are critical in terms of coming together to support First Nations parents with disability.
Professor Higgins, the last topic I wanted to come to was data. Is there sufficient data about people with disabilities within the child protection system?
Well, unfortunately, there's no one answer to that because we have eight different systems in Australia, every state and territory is different, and every data collection system is different, so there's no common platform across all of those, and that's why it's an incredibly difficult and complex process in Australia to even have an aggregated view. And that data is brought together through the Australian Institute of Health and Welfare, who produce the Child Protection Australia report annually, but it is an incredibly large amount of work to find rules for data consistency out of all of those separate systems. But the short answer is, I don't believe that we have good, and we certainly don't have consistent data collection across the state and territory systems around the number of parents with disability who have come to their attention, or even more importantly, the ones who have been referred for intensive supports through the kind of secondary service system, or even of the type of disability, and more importantly again, the types of supports that are being provided to them, the nature of those reasonable adjustments, if you like, from a disability rights perspective that we would hope and expect to have in place.
Now, you touched on this earlier, if there is a collection of data about First Nations status and disabilities, what is necessary to avoid the possibility of misuse of that data and discrimination against parents by collection of that data?
Yeah, it's a complex one, and I'm aware that there is already concerns, particularly amongst First Nations organisations, that identification of Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander status brings the risk of racism and of biased views about the nature of risk that child protection workers and other people in a whole range of different service provider systems will encounter. So that fear, I think, is amplified in this instance, that will disability status, if it's routinely collected, lead in a way to that heightened perception of risk and bias towards seeing these parents as being less capable, or automatically assuming a lack of capability, rather than the opposite, which is what I'm advocating for, that it be used to describe in more detail what is the level of need and how can those needs best be addressed in order to avoid any potential risk escalating.
So a system that if the data is collected, the primary obligation is for the collector of the data to be setting out what they're doing to address the needs that that data identifies?
That's right.
Right. Professor Higgins, at paragraph eighty-eight of your twelve November statement, you go through in considerable detail about recommendations to reform the child protection system, and those are recorded in your statement. Chair, that's the evidence in chief of Professor Higgins, and I understand that Ms Viness S.C. for the State of New South Wales seeks leave to ask some questions?
Yes. Before we do that, I'll just ask whether any of the commissioners have any questions they wish to ask at this stage that may be relevant to anything that Ms Viness wishes to address. Commissioner Mason, is there anything that you wish to ask Professor Higgins?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Okay.
Commissioner McEwan?
No, thank you.
Yes, Ms Viness, I think you wanted to ask Professor Higgins some questions.
I did, thank you. Chair?
Professor Higgins, Ms Viness represents the State of New South Wales, and she is presently located in Sydney, and will ask you some questions from that location. Yes, go ahead, Ms Viness.
Thank you. Professor Higgins, have you had the opportunity of reading the Secretary of the Department of Communities and Trust's statement, Mr Coots Trotter?
No, I haven't read it in detail. I was aware that he has made a statement, but I haven't yet read it in full.
Have you had access to the statements?
I believe they were part of the witness list.
Now, there are two areas I wanted to ask you questions about, Professor, and they're related. First appears in your main statement in relation to the child protection workforce, and that's paragraph forty-four of your statement. And there, in summary, you say that the training skill and knowledge of the child protection workforce needs to be broader and tailored to meet cultural needs of diverse groups such as First Nations. Right?
Yes.
And the second related matter appears in your supplementary statement. It starts at paragraph twelve, and it's the community development approach to the welfare of children, where you argue that that approach requires a community-led ground-up approach. That's right?
Yes.
And you accept that they're related in that you would want the training of staff to also have the benefit of that ground-up approach, I take it?
Yes, you're right, although I probably would point out that my comments in relation to training were really in relation to training of the tertiary workforce, whereas most of those who are involved in community development approaches, it's not driven by the tertiary workforce. Of course, there needs to be interconnection between all of the levels of a public health approach to child abuse and neglect prevention, but they're at opposite ends of the extreme. Community development approaches would be the primary prevention activities largely, and the statutory workforce whose training my comments relate to is dealing with often the most high-risk and at the opposite end of the continuum.
But you would nevertheless want those at that continuum to have an understanding of the cultural needs of particularly First Nations family and children who they're working with.
Absolutely. And of course, the middle ground is that often the kind of services that are developed through a community development approach can be extended into that kind of secondary system, where through referral from a statutory child protection workforce, they can work collaboratively in order to try and address high risk, but that shouldn't be, in my view, the primary entrance point, if you like, into those services if you're going to address issues of stigma and...
Now, Professor, I want to ask you questions about aspects of the current New South Wales system. I'm going to do so by reference to Mr Coots Trotter's statement. Do you happen to have that in front of you?
No, I would need to go and find it, but I'm...
That's all right. I can take you to the relevant sections. Now, you're aware that the New South Wales system has a caseworker development programme, aren't you?
Yes.
And that's a seven-week mandatory programme for all new caseworkers. Are you aware of that?
Well, pretty much every jurisdiction has a similar kind of process for supporting caseworkers within the statutory service, yes.
Now, were you aware that the caseworker development programme in New South Wales was recently developed or redeveloped in close partnership with ABSEC? Were you aware of that?
No, no, but that's pleasing to hear.
That's certainly a good thing in terms of providing those involved on the ground with First Nations issues to be redeveloping a caseworker programme, isn't it?
That's right, but it's dealing with that third part of the public health continuum, yes.
Now, it's also the case that there's been a connecting with Aboriginal communities mandatory training programme in New South Wales. Were you aware of that?
No, as I said, I'm not familiar with the detail of the training programmes in any of the states and territories in a specific sense, but it's consistent with my understanding of what happens in most jurisdictions.
And in relation to this training, the Grandmothers Against Removal, GMA, and stolen generation members and local community elders, have been involved in the development of that training. Now, that also is a very positive move in relation to training of caseworkers, is it not?
Yes.
Now, it is also the case that the caseworker development programme covers a deal of material in relation to parents with disability. You're aware of that?
As I said, I don't have specific knowledge of that.
But again, for that to occur would be very positive in your view?
Yes, but not sufficient.
Not suggesting that it alone will make significant changes, but it is a component that is a positive one, is it not?
That's right.
And you referred in your statement at paragraph sixty-five to the Parenting Research Centre, providing training to those working with parents with intellectual disability, or tailored in their practice. Are you familiar with that in your statement?
Yes.
And again, I suggest be positive if what was done by the Parenting Research Centre is replicated in what is done through the casework development programme.
Yes, yes, and I'm familiar with the Parenting Research Centre's kind of philosophical approach to supporting parents with disability, and so if that's replicated in training for those who are working outside of the statutory child protection system as well as those working within it, that is a good thing.
Now, are you aware of the Aboriginal Case Management Policy that was introduced in New South Wales in 2018?
No, I'm not familiar with a number of the individual policies of the states and territories.
Well, and I'm at paragraph one hundred and thirteen, for those who are following Mr Coots Trotter's statement, the New South Wales Government released the Aboriginal Case Management Policy in 2018, as I say, and it was developed by ABSEC, which is the New South Wales Child, Family and Community Aboriginal Corporation. Was that right?
Sorry, I missed your question.
You were not aware that that case management policy was developed by ABSEC?
No, look, I fully accept that there are a number of policies in each of the states and territories that are developed in collaboration with peak bodies in their respective states. Here in Victoria, where I'm based, we have very similar kind of engagement with the Victorian Aboriginal Childcare Agency, and I know that in Queensland, WOTCIP, who I mentioned just before, play a very similar role in collaborating with states around their policies and practices, and as you've pointed out, training as well, all of which is positive, but it's dealing with a very small part of what the need is from my perspective. My evidence relates largely not to the statutory system, but to the gaps in relation to the absence or the difficulty of getting appropriate prevention services based in universal service delivery platforms, so not the child protection system itself.
But you accepted in the child protection system, to the extent you know of it in New South Wales, that there is a deal of collaboration between First Nations peoples and peak bodies and the statutory system in order for those First Nations people to be involved in developing and running services?
Yes.
Yes. Now, are you familiar with the Productivity Commission report in January 2020?
Yes.
There is data there, and it's referred to at paragraph one hundred and eighty-four of Mr Coots Trotter's statement, where it's recorded that from 2015-16 to 2019-20, there has been a thirty-three percent reduction in Aboriginal children entering out-of-home care in New South Wales. Now, I take it that you would see that as a positive measure of change?
Absolutely.
Now, the other recent report was the Family Matters Report 2020. You're familiar with that?
Yes.
And in that report, page sixteen, it records that New South Wales leads the nation in the proportion of expenditure on ACCO, that's Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community-controlled organisations. So New South Wales leads the nation in the proportion of expenditure on ACCOs overall. That's a positive aspect of the work in New South Wales again.
Yes. Although I would note that it doesn't necessarily break down, to my understanding, what the expenditure is in relation to supporting those Aboriginal community-controlled organisations to undertake primary prevention activities in their communities, as opposed to targeted intensive family support programmes. And so that's one of the things that, I believe my evidence is pointing to strongly, is shifting not just the investment from the statutory tertiary system into the secondary system, but shifting it even further down into the primary prevention activities and taking a community development approach to that. So I agree that what you're pointing to is positive, but if you're asking from my evidence, would I say that that's sufficient, I would say no, and that like other states and territories, that there is still more that could be done to prevent the kind of risks from escalating the more intensive services needed.
Thank you. So we don't know the breakup from that figure. All we do know is that it does lead the nation overall in that expenditure?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm not included.
Just to refer to the legislation that you referred to, Professor Higgins, the relevant provisions are contained in Part Two A of the Child Protection Act 1999, which has headed prescribed delegates for Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander children.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much for giving evidence and for both of your detailed statements, and we appreciate your contributions to the work of the Royal Commission. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes, where do we go from here?
Chair, the next two witnesses are Megan Crawford and Karina Muller, who will be giving evidence as a panel. They are witnesses from the Queensland Government, and Ms Elizabeth Bennett will take these witnesses from Melbourne.
Bennett will take these witnesses from Melbourne. The two witnesses will be present here in the hearing room in Queensland.
Right, thank you very much.
Could, could, Chair, could, we'll probably just take a minute or so to set up, but we'll proceed to do that now.
Yes, well, we won't adjourn. We'll just wait until the setting up takes place, but I can see Ms. Bennett on the screen, so we're part of the way there. I think we now have Ms. Crawford and Muller in the Brisbane Hearing Room, together with at least one cup of coffee, which is good. I will ask Ms. Crawford, Ms. Crawford and Ms. Muller, please, to make the overriding statement, as the case may be, so if it would be good enough, follow the instructions from Commissioner, I person, associate. She will administer the, the affirmation.
I will read you both the affirmation. At the end, please both say yes, or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
I think you each need to say yes. I heard one yes.
No, they both said yes. I heard.
Both said yes. Very good. Thank you for coming to give evidence. Ms. Bennett will ask you some questions. She is in the, in Melbourne. You are in the Brisbane Hearing Room. Commissioner McEwan and I are in the Sydney, in the Sydney offices of the Royal Commission, and we hope that our use of the. Yes, Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Chair, somewhere there is quite a lot of background noise.
Where? Ms. Bennett, I, I deeply regret to say that it is said that it's coming to your end.
I see. Yes, I can see the problem. There are microphones. I have a junior sitting very close to the microphones. I might just ask her to move away from the microphones. Thank you, I'm grateful.
And, and tell her to stop breathing.
Yes, it seems a difficult instruction, but I'll try.
Right, the, the first task is to get rid of the junior. Once you've done that.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Crawford, you've made a statement of thirty-one pages, dated twenty-three October two thousand and twenty, is that right?
Yes, that's right, yes.
The number of annexes?
Yes.
And are the statements of that, are the contents of that statement true and correct, Ms. Crawford?
Yes, they are.
Yes. So, Chair, the statement, Ms. Crawford, can be found at tender bundle Part D, Tab One. I ask that it be marked Exhibit eight point eight. It has six annexes, and I ask that they be marked Exhibits eight point eight point one to eight point eight point six, if it pleases, Chair.
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
Now, Ms. Muller, you have made a statement of seventeen pages, dated twenty-eight October two thousand and twenty, is that right?
That's correct.
And are the contents of that statement true and correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Chair, I ask that the statement can be found at tender bundle D, Tab Eight. I ask that it be marked Exhibit eight point nine, and the exhibits be marked eight point nine point one to eight point nine point five, if it pleases, the Commission.
Yes, that can be done, thank you.
Please, Chair. Now, Ms. Crawford, you are the Chief Practitioner in the Department of Child Safety, Youth and Women, is that right?
We've actually had a change in name for our department, so we had a state election not long ago, and there had been some machinery of government changes. So, we're actually now the depart, yes, so we're actually now the Department of Children, Youth Justice and Multicultural Affairs.
All right. Well, from here on, I might refer to that organisation as the department, if that's convenient.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Now, you report directly to the general director, the, the Director General of that department, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. And Ms. Muller, you're the executive director.
Might I, might I ask, sorry, might I ask what happened to women?
Um, Justice and Attorney General. Yes.
At least it's still there, Chair.
Yes, yes. So, so women and domestic and family violence went across in the machinery of government changes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, just so I understand, is domestic violence now the focus of a different department, not your department?
Yes, that's right.
And it previously was the, the concern primarily of your department, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, we might come back.
Yes, it was one area of our department. So, we had child safety, youth and women.
And as part of women, domestic violence?
Yes.
I see. And Ms. Muller, you're the Executive Director in the department, is that right?
Correct. Yes.
Yes. And who do you report to?
The Deputy Director General of Strategy.
Okay. Now, just so that we understand, Ms. Muller, you say that the role of the department is to support children and young people. That remains the case after the machinery of government changes, is that right?
Correct.
And, and just so that we can place this in a machinery position, that's the part of the department that is involved in the identification of interventions that might be required for child safety, is that right?
Yes.
Ms. Crawford?
Yes.
Yes.
And that can include removal at, at an extreme, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Now, Ms. Crawford, you say in your statement, at paragraph twelve, you, you tell the Commission that First Nations children are overrepresented in child protection, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And they comprise about forty-three percent of children receiving ongoing intervention, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
You refer to that in your statement, yes?
Yes, I was just going to clarify that ongoing intervention can include intervention with a parental agreement, arrangement, or a child protection order.
Understand, thank you. Now, you refer to that as an exact, as racial inequality in your statement. Can you explain why you describe it that way in your statement?
We do not want the overrepresentation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children. We want the responses for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children to be similar to those that non-indigenous children experience. So, we try to work so that we don't have overrepresentation in our system.
And is it fair to say that you work hard to try to identify the causes of that overrepresentation?
Yes, I think that's a reasonable statement, yes.
There's been a, a lot of evidence over the last day or so about the notion of unconscious bias. Are you familiar with that concept?
Yes, yes, it is something that people will raise, particularly in relation to child protection workers. So, what are the biases that they bring to their assessment and decision-making processes? Yes.
And so, can, can I ask you to explain to the Commission what you understand unconscious bias to mean?
Well, you might unconsciously have a particular view of a particular cohort of people, for example. So, you might have a negative view of a particular cohort of people.
And it's unconscious because?
You don't necessarily verbalise that, but it may well influence your decision-making.
And it, it's inherent in the concept, in the very title, the person themselves may not be even conscious of that bias. Is that fair?
That's right, yes. So, we do raise this issue with our child protection workforce, and it is part of supervision practices with more experienced senior team leaders, that when they are reflecting and analysing the cases that are before them, that there is an opportunity to check in and to unpack any potential biases.
Because as it relates to First Nations people, is it your department's view that unconscious bias can operate to the detriment of First Nations people in that space?
I think it can operate, and it speaks to a number of strategies that we have put in place to put a focus on culture and to increase cultural capability in our organisation. So, for example, we have cultural practice advisers and Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander practice leaders to assist our staff in their decision-making. And we have.
Well, come forward there just for a moment.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I, I had a question about, about those positions. Where do they rank in terms of the officers carrying out child protection work in your department?
So, the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander practice leaders are a PO six level, which is equivalent to a Child Safety Service Centre manager position, and the cultural practice advisers are in the administrative stream at an AO four, which, as I understand, it sits somewhere between a PO two and a PO three, which is our Child Safety Officer level. So, we do, for example, have some difficulty attracting our cultural practice advisers to our baseline Child Safety Officer positions, because the AO four position is higher than the PO two position, if that makes sense.
Yes. Is it possible for the people in that position to override decisions that they consider to be culturally inappropriate?
They, not, not necessarily to override, but certainly to influence heavily, and they are consulted as the cultural specialists that they are. They will bring the cultural lens, they will bring an understanding of cultural authority, cultural obligation, community expectations. So, I would say they are influential in the decision-making.
And, and if it turns out that a case officer or an authorised officer disagrees with, with someone in that position, is that recorded anywhere? Is there any record kept of a disagreement between those cultural officers and others?
There may well be. So, what we try to encourage in our practice is what we call a practice panel approach. So, when there are significant decisions being made in relation to all children, but particularly Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children, we may well bring a panel of the workers and any critical friends together. So, those, those panel meetings are minuted, and if the cultural practice adviser, or indeed the critical friend, who might be from an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander non-government organisation, if they have a view that is different to other members of that panel, that would be minuted.
And is that centrally recorded somewhere, where it's possible to audit the extent to which, or the number of times, or the proportion of times? So, does the department have no insight into the number of times the advice of those practice leaders is disregarded?
I, I don't think their advice would ever be disregarded. It would form part of the discussion and the consideration. And no, we don't have data, as I say, that would be reflected in practice panel minutes.
So, you, you don't know if there is often disagreement or rarely disagreement?
I don't have data to suggest either, no.
So, so you can't assist the Royal Commission to understand if their views are disregarded or not?
What I can tell you is that our cultural practice advisers are highly valued members of our staff. They come into those practice panel discussions as highly valued staff. They bring a cultural lens that we see as very important.
It was suggested by one of the witnesses, I think Ms. Pacino, that positions of this kind are tokenistic and they don't carry significant influence. I take it from your evidence that you would disagree with that?
I do disagree with that. In fact, I was very disappointed to hear that, very disappointed. We do not see them as ticker box or tokenistic. They are highly valued members and often sit on our leadership teams within Child Safety Service Centres. And I can say that the positioning on leadership teams and that they're high worth has probably come about because of our continuous quality improvement processes. So, we have service and practice delivery standards that our Child Safety Service Centres are held to. The very first standard is culture. So, we want a culturally responsive, a culturally humble approach to the work that we undertake with our children, young people, parents and families.
Now, we've talked a bit about the rate of interventions for First Nations children. Are you able to assist the Royal Commission in the rate of interventions for children with a disability?
We do have some data around interventions with children with a disability. So, perhaps what I can offer the Royal Commission is that in the transition to the NDIS, our Disability Centre of Excellence did some modelling on what we should expect to see in terms of NDIS plan eligibility. So, there was modelling that suggested between sixteen and twenty percent of children in our system would have a disability that would make them eligible for an NDIS plan. We've been working very hard to ensure that children with a disability do have supports from NDIS. I actually think we're the, the jurisdiction with the most success in this respect. So, and we have seen in some locations that percentage increase up to twenty-five percent. So, we have, we have referred almost two thousand five hundred children for NDIS plan eligibility, and just under two thousand children are currently supported with an NDIS plan.
And what about parents and carers? Does your system maintain accurate records about parents or carers who have a disability?
No, no, we don't. It is something.
And your statement says, your statement at paragraph twenty-seven notes that it's difficult for you to extract data about disability status and needs. Is that still the case?
Yes, it is still the case. What I can advise, though, is that we are changing our client information system. So, it's a very significant investment and change in the system, and we are helping inform the data fields in that system so that we can capture disability-related data far more accurately. I am pleased to say that the specialist services team, which is a team that I oversee, which focuses on children with a disability, are, are key to that reform and are influencing that system design.
All right. Now, has the proportion of First Nations children, the subject of intervention from your department, been increasing in recent years or decreasing?
In terms of out-of-home care or Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children entering care, our rates have remained relatively stable for about nine quarters now. And I'm looking to Karina because she is the expert in this sort of data. So, for about the last two and a half years, the proportion of children who are in care, who are indigenous, has stayed relatively stable at about forty-two, forty-three percent of total children in care. That doesn't mean, though, that in number terms, that we haven't seen an increase in the total number of indigenous children in care. We have, both as number and as a rate per one thousand. So, that figure that Megan was referring to basically is showing that the growth rate of indigenous children in care for the last couple of years has basically been the same as the growth rate for non-indigenous.
for the last couple of years has basically been the same as the growth rate for non-Indigenous. So I guess the overall comment is that we have seen increasing growth of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children in our system. There's a couple of areas where we haven't. One of them is in terms of the number of children that are being substantiated. So those children that we find following an investigation that they have been harmed or at risk of significant harm. That, both in number terms and as a rate per one thousand, has stayed relatively steady since two thousand and twelve thirteen. In fact, we had a little bit of a decrease there for a while. But with Covid hitting this year, we have seen that surge up in demand again at the moment.
Ms Muller, what are the, oh, Ms Muller, what are the actual numbers? If you can take us from, say, three years ago, how many children are in care altogether? How many First Nations children are in care? What are the numbers over the last three years?
Yes. Would you like me to start from kind of the beginning of the system? Or just for out of home care?
Just start with out of home care and then we can work on something.
Okay, so we have about ten thousand two hundred children in care in Queensland in total. And about four thousand four hundred of those are First Nation. So that's where we get forty three percent of children in care currently are First Nation. Um. That figure has increased back in two thousand and sixteen, so a few years ago. It was about forty two percent of total children in care were First Nation. Um, if we look back to the year before our reforms.
No, no, not the percentage, sorry. I wanted to know, let us say in two thousand and sixteen, forty two percent of what? What was the total number of children in care in two thousand and sixteen compared with the ten thousand two hundred in care?
Uh, I can look that up for you. So two thousand and sixteen. Um, two thousand and sixteen, we had three thousand six hundred and nine First Nation children in care out of a total of eight thousand six hundred and fifty four. If we look back at, say, two thousand.
There's been roughly a sixteen percent increase in First Nations children in care over the last four years.
Correct. And if we, for us in Queensland, we typically look at the year prior to our Commission of Inquiry reforms, which is twenty, two thousand and twelve thirteen is our base year. So if we look back then, we have had a increase of about one thousand two hundred more First Nation children in care since then. And back in the year before our reforms, thirty nine percent of children in care were First Nation. So we have continued to see increasing numbers, increasing as a rate per one thousand and increasing as an overall proportion. Now, in the last couple of years, that has started to slow. So in two thousand and sixteen, when we did the forecasting in terms of where we were going to be getting to with this, we had calculated that by this year, over half of all of our children in care would be First Nation. Now, since that time, we've only put on that extra one percentage point. And that was really one of the key things that sparked the development of the Our Way strategy. Which is that twenty year strategy, which is basically saying, this is not good enough. We do need a fundamental rethink and we need to eliminate this disproportionate representation of First Nation children and families that are in contact with our system.
Thank you. I'll leave Miss Bennett to explore the fundamental rethink.
Yes, thank you Chair. So there's been increases over time and is that a matter of concern to the department that the increases are continuing?
Yes.
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 Um, so yeah, publicly, we will say this is the most.
So I go on.
Sorry, I was gonna say that publicly, we will, we will say that it's the most significant issue that we face as a system.
Okay. So, but we're not aware of what proportion of those young people or their families have a disability? So we don't know if that's trending up or down as well? Well, for, alright, children or families, you think you might know in terms of children? If there are more with a disability into care or not?
Um, we have historically not had fantastic data reporting in our system in terms of children with disability. So as Megan said earlier, there has been significant work underway with the N D I S to making sure that we get those records in our system. So what we really have at the moment is probably around twenty percent of children in care with disability. We don't really know how that compares to the past.
And can you tell me though what definition of disability the department is using to come up with that statistic?
Yes, so you will see in my statement that there were, there are a number of fields that we include in our client information system. So it's quite a broad definition of disability. And what we did was we added these fields, but the fields have been there since, I think, two thousand and seven. But we added extra fields with the transition to the N D I S so that we could keep records of any N D I S plans.
Well, this is paragraph twenty nine of your statement, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And that's where you say the disability types are not explicitly defined?
That's right, but that's a drop down box. Yeah, it's a drop down box from which workers can choose.
But that is not, there's other, so you can have anything of A to T of the drop down menu. And then there is U, which is other.
Indeed, yes.
And so in terms of, and indeed, there's also not specified. What do you understand would be included in the not specified category?
That is a good question. Uh.
Thank you.
It might be something that's not yet diagnosed, not, that's not specific to those other categories.
Well, do the other categories need a diagnosis?
Uh, not always, no, but we will, where required, seek a specialist or expert diagnosis.
Can it just be the case officer or the authorised officer's perception of that person?
Uh, we would encourage more rigorous information gathering than just their perception. So it might be information that's being provided by family members or the G P or teachers, education personnel. Those are the sorts of sources that would inform the, the collection of that data. And with you, it's broad.
Well, it's, it's not just that it's broad, it's undefined.
Miss Bennett, sorry, Miss Bennett, may I just clarify that? So are you saying, Miss Crawford, Commissioner McEwen here, are you saying that the caseworker relies on second hand information at times, sometimes? Do, if, say, a teacher might say the child has X disability, is that what you're saying? In terms of this collection of information?
Our preferred source of information would be the parent or the child themselves. But the other sources of information that may be available to us may be those other professionals in contact with the child and the family.
Oh, thank you.
But it's fair to say that this, that there's no specific definition of disability that is applied by your department in this capture of data?
That's a fair statement, yes.
So do you, are you aware of the definition under the Disability Discrimination Act? Is that a definition that is talked about within the department?
It is something that we include in our training and in our disability practice kit, which Child Safety Officers and other staff can access through our Child Safety Practice Manual.
But that's not the definition that's adopted for these purposes?
Well, these are different categories of disability. Uh, whereas the definition that we include in our training and other resources is that disability is any restriction or lack resulting from an impairment of ability to perform an activity in the manner or within the range considered normal.
Okay. All right, we might come back to that a little later on when we get to some of the structured decision making models. Um.
Sure.
I wanted to move on to make sure that we all, well, so while we're talking about disability, I wanted to raise with you that Commissioner Lewis, in her statement, which you may not have read. She says that First Nations parents with a disability or parents of a child with a disability are more likely to experience service inequity. Would you agree with that proposition?
Uh, I think it's likely that a parent with a disability may experience service inequity. And we as service providers need to work hard to ensure that there is equity in the services available.
All right, well, I'd like to then just turn to briefly identify the structure of the department. We've done this a little bit. I just want to be clear, as I understand it, authorised officers are effectively the frontline workers who interact with families and children, is that right?
Yes, they work directly with children and families.
And they're authorised by the Chief Executive under the Child Protection Act?
That's right.
They're authorised where they have appropriate expertise. What is that expertise?
So we, Child Safety Officers and senior team leaders are required to have a bachelor level qualification. Our preferred pathways are social work, human services and psychology. So they come with those basic bachelor degrees. And then we offer them mandatory and non-mandatory training on their entry to our workforce.
Okay.
I should say whilst, I should say whilst social work, human services and psychology are our preferred degrees, we do accept other degrees at times when, when people have completed core subjects that relate to the work and engagement with children and families.
All right. And it's these authorised officers who have a range of powers that they exercise often upon reasonable belief, is that right? So they make applications?
On the basis of their assessment. And we endeavour that Child Safety Officers do not make decisions in isolation. So they are often supported by either another peer or a more experienced Child Safety Officer and their senior team leader.
Okay. Can you explain to the commission the role of the Director of Child Protection Litigation in this structure?
So the Director of Child Protection Litigation does not sit in our structure. So it was a key recommendation from the Child Protection Commission of Inquiry that our litigation model changed quite significantly. So the D C P L, as we call it, and if I may, I'll refer to it as that, the D C P L, actually is an independent body and reports through to the Attorney General of the Department of Justice and Attorney General. So they are now the applicants in child protection matters, not child safety staff. So.
And have DC. Have you observed a shift in the litigation conduct since the Director's office has been, or the D C P L's office has been in place?
Uh, yes, I have seen some shifts. I can speak to what the Commission of Inquiry was trying to achieve. So they were keen that we were, that parents had more transparency of information, that there was greater procedural fairness afforded to them. That there was some oversight of child safety decisions, that we were model litigants. And that there was a specialist knowledge applied to child protection order applications.
Um, Chair, I'm asked to seek indication from you as to when a good time for a break would be. I'm also told there is some ongoing noise problems with the microphone that we can't determine the source of. So I wonder if that means that we should have a brief break while we work that out? It's a little bit earlier than I had anticipated, but I, I'm.
Let us, let us have a break. It is now Queensland time two forty. So if we return at two fifty five, it could be three fifty five. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Crawford. Miss Muller will resume in fifteen minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Miss Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. And Miss Crawford, I think before that break, we were talking about recording, keeping records of disability status for parents and carers. Is that something the department will be looking into in the future?
Yes, it will, yes. So with our new information system, we are hoping that those fields will be, well, they will be built in and that we will have more accurate data capture potential.
And will that data capture be of specific definitions of disability?
Yes, I would suggest it will be.
Thank you, Miss Crawford. Now, I'd like to ask you about some of the structured decision making tools that you refer to in your statement. So at around paragraph forty six, you talk about, I'll call them S D M's, structured decision making assessments, as I understand it. Now, as I understand your evidence, these were introduced to try to increase consistency of decision making, is that right?
Yes, it was as a result of the two thousand and four Crime and Misconduct C M C Inquiry into Abuse in Foster Care. So the guidelines that were issued said that we needed a more standardised way of assessing and safety planning and then case planning. I should just make the point that they're not all risk assessments. So there are eight, there are eight tools in the structured decision making toolkit. And really, they support decisions rather than assess risk necessarily.
Yes, some do and some guides to decision making, is that right?
So they all guide decision making, they're all tools that guide decision making, yes.
Yes. But some do that by seeking to identify and ascribe a risk level based on a number that relates to certain factors.
So one of the tools isn't, one of the tools is an actuarial tool. It's the family risk evaluation tool.
All right, well, perhaps we might go to that tool operator. It is at Q L D dot zero 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 three dot zero zero two eight dot zero two four eight. That's the first page. And I, I think that the tool that you are speaking about is at uh, page zero zero three dot zero zero two eight dot zero three zero five. And perhaps I could test that with you. Is that the, is that the tool that you're talking about there?
I'm sorry, I don't have the exhibits marked as you do, but yes, it's just come up on the screen. Yeah, thank you.
So is that, that is the.
That is the family risk evaluation for a tool. If I can.
So can I just, well, I'll just ask you a few questions first, if that's all right?
Okay.
So on the left hand side, we have measures of neglect. And if one scores zero to two, that will be considered a low risk score on the neglect scale, is that right?
Uh, yes.
And if you score three to five, that will be a moderate risk of neglect?
Yes, it's all contained there at the bottom.
Yeah.
I don't, I can't, I can't see the full screen, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to go to it in the manual so that I can be. I don't, I can't, I can't see the full screen, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to go to it in the manual so that I can be speaker with more authority.
It's Exhibit E and page fifty-five and fifty-six. And perhaps the operator could put document zero three zero six, the page next to it up as well. Thank you, operator. And so you'll see that this is the tool in, as a whole.
Mm-hmm.
And so the authorised officer will be completing this tool. And they will be identifying, they'll be ascribing a score to neglect and a score to abuse. And then they will be able to identify a risk level at low, moderate or high. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, it is.
All right. I'd like to just understand the way that this tool works in practice. Because it's intended to operate objectively. And I'm interested in understanding if it might inadvertently operate in a way that identifies higher risk for First Nations people or people with a disability, okay? Is that a concern with this tool that you're aware of?
Yes, it is a concern that has been raised. And it is a concern that we have spoken with the developers of the tool about.
And just to pause there, the developers of the tool, have they validated this tool for First Nations people?
Yes, they say that they have factored equity for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families.
Well, when you say factored, is that the same as validated?
Yes.
Okay. And is that nationally or in Queensland? Or where's the, where's that research been done?
As I understand it, it's using, using a Queensland data set.
Okay. Now, and when was, when did that validation complete? Because I wasn't able to see reference to that validation in your statement.
I would have to find the date. I, I think it was 2015. But I can come back to you with the actual date.
All right, we might ask you to take that on notice. The SDM's been updated a number of times since 2015, hasn't it?
It has, yes.
Including by reference to various First Nations-specific issues?
That's right. So we.
And so has it been validated, has it been validated since those updates?
No.
Okay. So let me just ask you about, at N1, so if I understand correctly, an authorised officer will ascribe a zero or one depending on the answer to the question of whether the notification includes neglect or not. Is that right?
That's right. So, that's right. So that's the current notification, yes.
And is that a substantiated notification or is that a notification that has, as yet unverified?
Usually this is done after, so at the completion of the INA process. So typically, yeah.
Okay. And then at N2, we see prior child safety notifications. There's a, a score of zero for none, one for one notification, and two or more is two. Now, I understand that this refers to all prior notifications, regardless of if they were investigated, assessed, substantiated or unsubstantiated. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So is there a risk of over-report for First Nations families in that category?
Yes, I think there is a risk of over-report, yes.
And you could score two because of that, that over-reporting risk in that category, couldn't you?
You could, yes.
Yes. Then at N4, this is a prior out-of-home placement category, so you'll gain a point if you have, if the child has had an out-of-home placement in the past, is that right?
That's right.
And more First Nations children, we know, have been placed in out-of-home care, is that right?
There is a higher proportion of children in out-of-home care who are First Nations, yes.
Is that a ref, sorry, sorry to interrupt. Is that a reference to a prior out-of-home placement for the particular child? Or that the parent has been, had had a child that has been subject to an out-of-home placement previously?
It should be for the child, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
The next is N5, the number of children living in the notified household. So a family will score zero if they have three or fewer children, and they will score one if they have four or more children. Is that more a measure, is that something that you would consider to be a proxy for poverty? The number of children in the one house? No?
No, no, I would not see it as a proxy for poverty, no.
So you wouldn't see a risk of over-representation of First Nations children in that category?
I do think that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander parents often have more than three children. I, I think there are large family groupings, yes. But I don't think it's a proxy for poverty. I think it's more about a proxy of parent, possible parental stress and capability to meet all those children's needs.
All right. Could I take you down to N10? Now, this is a measure, as I understand it, where the primary parent has a history as a child of abuse or neglect. There will be a score of one again. Now, is abuse or neglect something that might be more common in First Nations families with a history of dispossession?
Yes, we know that from research, yes.
And so this is part of a, is there a risk of over-representation for First Nations people in this category as well?
Yes. I, could I just offer how this tool is used?
Yes, I'd like to come to that because I think that there's steps. So I just want to understand how these factors, I understand what these factors are first, if that's all right?
Sure, certainly.
Yeah. So N11, then look to the primary parent mental health. Now, what is the definition of mental health being applied here?
Yes, good question. I think it is a broad definition of mental health.
Well, is it even a definition of mental health? As I understand it, well, first of all, we say a past or current mental health problem. So what is a mental health problem?
Well, usually it's, it's an emotional, psychological impact on a child. So if a parent is having a struggle with their mental health, might be anxiety, depression, psychosis, schizophrenia, and if that's having an impact on the child.
Why does that impact have to derive from a mental health problem to create a score on this scale?
I'm sorry, why does it need to derive?
Why does there have to be a mental health problem? Why are you not just looking at the effect on the child? Why does it have to be tied to a mental health problem?
It, it is our job to assess whether there is an impact of the mental health issue for the child. But I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Any person who's had a mental health problem in their life could qualify for this if, in the view of the authorised officer, the child is, well, what would be the qualifier? Most of the population has had a mental health problem at some time in their life. What will score a one on this? Well, I object to the question, but that's not a good question. Where does that lie? On the most adults in your life? Well, I think I can.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Miss Bennet, that in the absence of evidence, you can say that most adults have had a mental health problem without at least defining mental health problem. So perhaps some.
Well, is, is depression a mental health problem?
Yes.
And so that's a widespread issue in the community, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Are all the mental health problems captured by this factor diagnosed by a professional?
Not necessarily. It might be a parent's self-report.
Could it be the authorised officer's assumption?
Not an assumption. As I said before, we rely on information gathering to inform our assessments.
There's no definition that an authorised officer can apply to identify a mental health problem, is there?
Uh, no.
So it will be left entirely to individual discretion as to what constitutes a mental health problem, is that fair?
Individual professional judgment, yes.
That's right. And, and your authorised officers are not necessarily medically trained, are they?
No, they're not necessarily medically trained. As I said before, they typically come from social work, human services and psychology backgrounds, which would cover subjects related to health and mental health.
But you're not suggesting that they're diagnosing mental health problems?
No, I'm not suggesting they're diagnosing. I suggest that we partner with health partners to do that.
Miss Crawford, what, what would happen if a parent disclosed that she, if it was the mother, had been prescribed antidepressants over a period of time? Would, would that demonstrate a mental health problem?
Potentially it could, Commissioner. What, what I am keen to offer the Royal Commission is how this tool is used, though.
Please, please, please do tell us.
Yes. So what that, there has been suggestion in some of the criticism and the research that it's this tool that's used to make a removal decision. That's not the case. So removal decisions are based on the safety assessment, which is a different tool in the SDM suite. So we remove a child when they are assessed as unsafe. What the FRE, this tool that is before us, helps us determine is the level of ongoing intervention that should occur. So for example, if you score a high risk level, then there are certain contact arrangements that are prescribed. So what the tool helps us determine is that if there's a high risk, then we should be seeing that family once a week, as well as support contact. The low or moderate determines the level of frequency of the ongoing contact. I think what worries us from researchers is that we are basing our removal decisions on the use of this tool, and that's not the case. I, I have.
Well, I might come to that.
I have huge respect for the researchers who have examined this tool. And please know that we are assisting them with further research regarding this tool. So I know that there have been some statements made about it and that it possibly is inequitable to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children. We are supporting further research by independent researchers regarding this and will be providing more recent data sets for them to reference.
Miss Crawford, you, you've said that this is, in effect, a trigger to determine whether some kind of contact should be made with the family presumably in order to both provide support and to determine whether there is a possible case for intervention. Is that a fair way of putting it?
It certainly assists in determining the ongoing support that a family might need and the level and intensity of that support, yes.
Yeah, but that wasn't the totality of my question.
Sorry, Commissioner, could you ask?
Provide an entree for assessing or possibly assessing whether the, whether there should be a decision in due course made about whether a child should be removed or not.
As I said, a removal decision is based on safety assessment, not the FRE.
Isn't this a necessary prerequisite to get to the point of where you make a determination based upon safety considerations?
The safety assessment actually comes before this tool, Commissioner.
Could you explain how that is?
So when we have contact with a family, we need to determine if there are any immediate harm indicators for a child. So there are 12 immediate harm indicators that we list in a safety assessment. And what we are determining at that point is whether a child is safe, safe with a plan or unsafe. So we complete the FRE at the end of our investigation and assessment process to help determine whether there should be a case-opening decision or if there should be other supports. And then what the frequency of that support should be. I'm sorry if that's confusing.
It is very confusing, I'm afraid, at least to me. You say that there is initially an assessment of safety or lack thereof based upon 12 criteria.
That's right.
And if there is assessed to be a risk to safety, what's the point of this evaluation?
So this is where the terms risk and danger are very important to understand. So when we're doing an initial safety assessment, we're determining if there's danger, immediate danger, for the child. The family risk evaluation helps us determine whether this child is more or less likely to experience a further incident of abuse or neglect in the next 12 to 24 months and what level of support should be offered. So this applies to both in-home interventions and out-of-home interventions. So for the, what I can offer the Royal Commission is that many of our interventions are intervention with a parental agreement. So we have about two and a half thousand of those matters where we actually offer in-home support to families. And what this FRE will help us determine is how often we should be seeing those children and that family in their homes.
Yes, all right. Well, I'll leave Miss Bennet to explore that as appropriate.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. So I think where we were is, is accepting, would you accept the general proposition that there are a number of these measures that appear to respond readily to First Nations people?
Yes, and it is something we have raised with the Children's Research Centre, yes.
And would you accept that, at least in the, in the instance of N11 and the question about primary parent mental health, that there is a potentially disproportionate impact on people with mental health issues?
Potentially there is an impact for parents with a mental health issue, yes.
Are, are you concerned that it could be stigmatising for people to seek help for their mental health issues if it might be recorded against them?
We encourage parents to seek the help that they need. I should also just make clear that this, these tools are not publicly available. They're not published. So what you are being provided is not actually a public document, it's a locked document.
Yes, so individuals may not know why they're scoring high or why their depression might have led to a higher score or greater intervention. Is that fair?
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying that. We, of course, need to outline the concerns that we have with families and about why we are concerned and about why we are taking the approach that we are. We need to be transparent. We need to be transparent with families.
Yes. So a family that scores a one on N1, for example, will be told your ment, your past mental health problem was a reason that we had a concern, was part of the reason that we had a concern. Is that the case?
It should be, yes.
Do, do you know if it is?
I, I would say it is, yes.
And are you concerned that that might be stigmatising for people who would otherwise seek help for their mental health difficulties?
As I say, we try to assist people to address the issues that are impacting on their children. It might be that there is no current impact of a mental health issue for a parent. So we do like to be seen as a helping organisation where we actually help parents get the assistance they need to increase safety for their children.
Would you accept that not all families view the department in that way?
Yes, I would accept that. I would also accept that others.
And I'm sorry, I interrupted you?
No, no, that's okay. I would accept that not everyone sees us as helping. And that is why we have, over the last number of years, worked very hard, particularly in the context of the Child Protection, the Commission of Inquiry, to bring particular tools that enhance our engagement and our transparency with families so that they fully understand the reasons why we're involved with them and what we are concerned about for the future.
Okay. You've heard some evidence that some people, for example, were unaware that notifications were made adverse to them in the past. Now, it appears on this measure that previous notifications, irrespective of whether they were verified, will count towards a risk score. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's right.
And and this might be the first time that someone is told that those notifications have been made?
Notifications are followed up with an investigation and assessment process, so they should know that. So they will have been consulted on that.
But you you agree with me that this measure counts notifications irrespective of whether they have been verified or substantiated or even investigated?
Not even investigated, but so child protection notification is followed up with an investigation and assessment.
Well, I might I might challenge you on that. Could you go to page 57 of that document at 0307, operator? Now, at N2.
Sorry, just if you wouldn't mind.
No, that's okay.
Oh, here, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Yep. At the first dot point, count all prior child safety notifications regardless of whether they were investigated and assessed, substantiated or unsubstantiated, or recorded with no possible outcome. So they are
Yeah, I, yes, you're right.
Yes, okay, so it might be the first time that someone hears about it when they are scored as being at a higher risk because of previous notifications.
Potentially, yes.
And that's not overwhelmingly transparent, is it?
As I say, we're really encouraging our staff to be as transparent as possible in their work with families. Families need to know why we are concerned, why we are involved with their children.
I accept that, but you agree with me that this, that's not what this measure says?
Yeah, I agree that it does not say that and that there are times
Just please, can we just make sure, please, that's one speaking at a time because it's a little difficult.
Yes. I wanted to ask you about N13 on that measure before we move on because that concerns primary parent criminal history. So if the operator could return to the previous page. Now, my understanding is that a risk score will, and the page before that, thank you, operator, and at N13. Now, my understanding of this category is that this will capture a criminal history excluding traffic offences other than drink driving, but all other offences will be captured by N13. Is that your understanding?
That is my understanding, that is what the definitions say.
And and so your understanding is that any previous criminal conviction except for driving offences other than drink driving is an indicator of risk?
It would add to the risk score, yes.
And and including those offences that have been identified as being as disproportionately affecting First Nations people?
Yes.
And so this is another category that could disproportionately affect First Nations people?
Yes.
I I count about six in the neglect category and I won't go through this process again, but on my count, we are almost at high, at a high risk for members of the First Nations community, simply because they come from that community. Is that is that fair?
Uh, in the way that you describe it, yes, it is a concern, which, as I say, is why we are open to more research regarding this tool.
I understand that. Then I'd like to move on to what happens next. So there's an override section. So if the operator could show stop 0306, the page on the right-hand side of the screen, there's the final risk level, bottom third of the page. And that shows low, moderate or high. And then an ongoing intervention decision. Now, as I understand it, an authorised officer can decide to go against, can can decide to override the decision that's mandated, if you like, or directed by the tool in certain circumstances, is that right?
Yes, and that would be approved by a senior team leader, so they would not make that decision in isolation.
And do you keep any records about how often an override is sought to be exercised?
We used to have a data management report provided to us. That hasn't happened in the last couple of years. We were getting that report from the Children's Research Centre, who would compile it after being provided with our data. We had hoped that we would be able to provide that report ourselves internally. And unfortunately, that hasn't happened to date.
So the department has no insight into how often authorised officers are departing from the recommendation of this tool, is that right?
We have had that historically, we have had that information historically. And those rates of overrides had remained relatively stable over a period of time. Right now, we don't have access to that data and it is something that we are, we would like.
How long has it been since you have had access to that data?
It's about two years.
Okay. And so the this S D M in its current form was last amended, I think in your statement, on 2018?
With the cultural consideration updates and also, yes. And also references to domestic and family violence that we, so we are maturing in our understanding of domestic and family violence. And so amended some of the wording in the tools to reflect that maturity.
And you haven't had any data about override since those amendments?
No, that's right.
Okay. And have you ever sought data about the override being applied in circumstances where First Nations children are involved?
Yes, yes, as I recall, the overrides, so that the management report did include a separation of decisions made for both Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander and non-Indigenous children.
And that's something you're seeking to reinvigorate in the future, is that right?
Yes, absolutely.
And what about for people with a disability? Is there any data on how often there is an override in that context?
No, no, there's not.
Okay. Now, I think, so the effect of this can be that a family is effectively monitored more closely by the department if they are identified as being at a higher risk, is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. That offered more support, yes.
Well, okay, so what's, let me go back. Are supports offered to parents with a disability who might need that support for their family?
Yes, and what we aim to do now is to ensure that they have access to the N D I S and the support that is available through N D I S planning.
Okay, so that's, they have access to N D I S support. Your department, does that provide separate support for those parents?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And can you tell me about how you go about assessing the kind of supports that those parents might need?
So it will depend on the harms that the child has experienced, what we are concerned about for the future, so what the impacts are for the child. So it will depend on what the parental functioning means for the child.
Um, okay, well, to give an example, if a parent is struggling with mental health, will they receive mental health support from your department?
Not from our department, but we would partner. We would partner to ensure that they do have the support that they need.
So whose responsibility?
Yeah, particularly if there was an impact for the child.
Okay, so if there's an impact for the child, will your support go to the question of risk or to the total support needed for the parent? Do you stop at risk or do you go further than that?
We want children to be cared for safely by their parents. So we will, we will try to ensure that the parent has the support they need to care safely for their child. So if, so if the issues are that they need assistance with parenting skills or meeting nutritional needs or understanding the educational needs of a child, then we will address the impacts for the child.
And is that something that is dealt with in part through a parenting capacity assessment?
Where required, we may seek external specialists for a parenting capacity assessment. And but often we will be talking, often we talk and gain information from parents, from children, from those people who are close to the family, to the parents who are offering them both formal and informal supports.
And at what stage does the Human Rights Act come into play for your decision-making?
So as you, as this commission knows, the Human Rights Act came into being in Queensland in January. It's fundamental to our practice. If our child safety officers are operating in accordance with the Child Protection Act, it is compatible with human rights.
So is it your position that any action taken that is compatible with, if it's not unlawful because of the Child Protection Act, it won't otherwise be unlawful because of the Human Rights Act?
What we ask is that staff consider human rights and that there is proportionate consideration to human rights and a child's safety.
All right, well, my question really is at what stage of decision-making? So if you are deciding to remove a child from their family, is the Human Rights Act a step in that decision-making? The rights protected by the Human Rights Act?
It's all part of our policy and and the way that we operate. So we ask child safety, we ask child safety officers to consider the 23 human rights in their, all of their activities and actions, yes.
Yeah, so at each stage, they will ask themselves before removing this child, I'm going to consider the right to culture, the rights to First Nation culture, the right to privacy in family, I'll consider all of those things before taking that step, is that right? Is that your expectation?
Well, as part of that decision-making and children's safety and children's safety is our paramount concern, yes.
Yes, and you heard, I think, the criticism earlier that one of the witnesses suggested that they had not seen substantial evidence of of human rights dialogue. Is that, is that consistent with your experience?
I think it's probably fair to say that our child safety officers aren't always referencing the Human Rights Act. If they are operating in accordance with the Child Protection Act, then that is compatible with human rights. And we have said that the Human Rights Act and the human, all 23 of the human rights are fundamental to our practice and our approach. All of our policies have been updated to reflect that. This is where the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander Child Placement Principles are fundamental to our approach as well. So we are saying that, and there were legislative amendments in October of 2018 to say that we needed to consider the five elements of the Child Placement Principle in all of our processes and decision-making.
And how do you measure if that's been done?
How do we measure it? That's a good question, too. So it's through our processes that we pay attention to those five elements of the Child Placement Principle. So things like, you know, have we worked to keep children in their families? Have we partnered with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander families and then Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islanders support agencies? Do we maintain connection to culture for children who might be in our system? We do reference the five elements of the Child Placement Principle.
Miss Crawford, can I ask you, sorry, can I ask you, please, what the expression "ongoing intervention decision" means, which is on page 56 of the document?
Yes, so ongoing
Ongoing intervention decision.
So that, as I referenced before, Commissioner, that might be an intervention with a parental agreement. So it's ongoing casework with a family, or it could be through a child protection order. So it covers both, ongoing intervention covers both intervention with a parental agreement or a child protection order.
That's what I rather thought I was asking you earlier, that this was a gateway to a possible inter, possible order affecting the child.
An intervention with parental agreement is not an order, Commissioner, it's an agreement with parents.
It's something that the, that there might be some pressure put upon the parent to agree, mightn't there?
Uh, pressure on them. I think what we would articulate is the harms that the child has experienced, why we think they're a child in need of protection and why we think that they need ongoing support and intervention to increase safety.
I understand why you express it that way, but in in fact, the parent, if the parent is to agree, then the parent would be presented with information that would indicate why, in the case of the mother, she should agree, wouldn't it? Wouldn't that be the case?
Uh, yes, yes. So again, we would relate that back to the harm that the child has experienced and what we think needs to happen to increase safety for that child.
So what we've got, what we've got here with the document that have been taken to by Miss Bennett at some length, the outcome of that is an ongoing intervention decision. This document is called the Policy and Procedures Manual, Structured Decision Making in Child Protection, Prior Child Protective Services. An ongoing intervention decision does seem to be a decision that affects the rights of people directly, both the child and the parent. That that's a fair assess assessment, isn't it?
It's a fair statement and, as I said before, is focused on what this child needs to be safe or to increase safety.
Yes, thank you.
Have you heard the phrase gratuitous concurrence?
Gratuitous concurrence? No, I'm not
Yes, have you heard that phrase before?
No.
The Royal Commission has heard some evidence that that some First Nations people will defer to authority figures when asked to comply with certain requests in a statutory context. Are you familiar with that concept?
I am familiar with that concept and it's why in the October 2018 ledge amendments, we said that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples do need support in or may choose to have support in the interactions that they have with us and that they do have the choice to have an independent person to assist them, to participate in decision-making. So, yes, I'm So, yes, I'm conscious.
Are your officers required to refer them to a support person?
They are required to offer them, um, an independent person.
Are they required to? Well, they're not required to refer them, are they?
No, so a family may, for example, nominate a member of their own community to be their independent person. But we have funded, um, family participation programs who can also offer a family, um, a staff member as an independent person.
And you're not require, you don't require your officers to notify any First Nations organisation that a family might be at risk of having a child removed?
Uh, so what we do is we use the Family Participation Programme um, at the point of investigation and assessment so that they assist, um, parents, um, participate in the decision making. So with the, um, Family Participation Programme and, and the guidelines that we have written, we've said that there are three key areas, um, in which, um, they should be involved. So during the investigation and assessment, um, process, through a case plan review, through a short term order and before the expiry, um, of a short term child protection order. And so that is our attempt to make sure that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander parents and families are supported, um, in decision making and in the discussions with us.
So my, my, my question is, are your officers required to refer them to a lawyer?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
Are, are your officers required to refer them to a peak First Nations organisation?
They are required to offer them an independent person who might be a member of the community or might be provided through, um, an FPP.
Ms Crawford, what do you mean required to offer them an independent person? Do you mean that the, uh, case officer is required to, to say, here is a particular person I can refer you to if you wish? Or does the case officer say, you have a choice if you wish to get hold of someone to help you?
The latter, yes.
The latter?
See, yes.
Now, how, of, how many First Nations parents, uh, have entered into agreements with you at this time? As of today, roughly?
I, I don't have that data, Commissioner.
And would you have the data that demonstrated what proportion of those had actually received independent advice before entering into the agreement?
Uh, no, I don't. It is something that we are working toward in the new information system. And it is, um, it is assistance, Commissioner, to participate in decision making. So it's not legal advice as such.
No, I'm not, I'm not limiting, I'm sorry, I'm not limiting my question to legal advice. I'm, I'm asking what proportion of those who have entered into agreements with the, uh, department have received independent advice of some sort or assistance?
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I wanted to ask a little bit about, um, the previous reports that have been actioned by, uh, the department. Now, I think Ms Muller, uh, this relates primarily to your statement. If I understand it correctly, there have been, um, if you like, generations of reports about, um, that touch upon child protection issues, and I think the first you refer to in your statement goes back to 2012, is that right? And is that fair?
Uh, the 2013 Child Protection Commission of Inquiry, yes?
Yes, um, and as I understand your statement, there were, um, a hundred and fifteen recommendations that were accepted in full and six recommended in principle, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, and so far, not all of those recommendations have been implemented, is that right?
A hundred and fifteen have been, as at June 2020.
Yes, so, um, and there was then, there, there are some left over? Are there some left of the, the recommendations made in 2013?
Uh, there are six that are currently underway, that are scheduled to be finished by the end of next year, correct?
Yes, and which, if any, of those relate to First Nations people?
Um, most of those outstanding recommendations are basically about legislative reforms, so, uh, applying to all people, uh, so, uh, looking at rights and then also the regulation of care.
Yes, um, and there was then a further review in 2015 that had a further 200 recommendations at, at paragraph 16 of your statement, followed by the Royal Commission into Institutional Responses to Child Abuse, which you say had a large number of recommendations concerning child protection. So is there a central repository for the recommendations that concern child protection that have been made by these inquiries?
Yes, there is. So, um, within our department, there's a, uh, program office that keeps a register of all of those different recommendations. Uh, and then also there's a program office in the Department of the Premier and Cabinet, uh, that also has a central register, say, of the, um, Commission of Inquiry recommendations and so on.
And, and is there any way to identify which of those recommendations specifically relate to persons with a disability?
Uh, I am not aware in terms of how they've set up that whole kind of data system. I dare say it would be apparent if it was within, say, the, um, title of the recommendation or the wording of the recommendation.
I see, and, and would the same be true for recommendations concerning First Nations people?
Yes, particularly given that so much of the child protection system, given that we do have, uh, such a high level of representation, um, all recommendations will be, uh, for Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander people. And then there may be in addition to that, some specific recommendations.
Now, as I understand your statement, the latest strategy, um, document for improvement and change in this area takes us between 2019 to 2023, I think it's at paragraph 18 of your statement?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
So, does that work as part of that strategy incorporate the previous recommendations?
Correct, so it, this strategy is really for the next five years of our, um, reform programme, so up to the period 2023. Uh, it's bringing all the different recommendations together um, and looking at what it is that government wants to achieve over the forward period. So everything has been brought under the banner of what we've called supporting families, changing futures.
Mm-hmm. Um, there are still some areas that are under review though, according to your statement, um, over the coming years, including overrepresentation of First Nations families. I think you say that at paragraph 42 of your statement. So i- is the program of work that's coming, both the implementation of previous reports and consideration of future change?
So could you repeat that question?
What I'm really asking, Ms Muller, is have you identified what you think you need to do to fix the overrepresentation of First Nations people? And just have to do it? Or are you still trying to work that out?
Um, I think we have a lot of the building blocks or the foundations for change in place. And I think, um, we have been working with our Indigenous peak and with our community-controlled organisations and through the establishment of our Queensland, uh, First Children and Families Board, um, that we know that there are certain things that are working and that we want to continue to enhance. So for example, we know, uh, family support services for First Nation families that are run by community-controlled organisations, um, are working and, and are helping to prevent those families from coming in contact with the child protection system. Uh, we know that in terms of having decisions made by First Nations people rather than doing two, so government changing, uh, more towards, you know, we trust that you know what to do to safely raise your child, uh, that we are getting a lot of positive support for that and that we are seeing, um, that, you know, that is something that we want to continue to progress. The increased investment in community-controlled organisations, the further delegation of authority.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I, I guess what I'm trying to work out is, are you only in implementation phase now or are you still developing solutions?
We are in a constant cycle of adjustment and, and, um, adapt. And so, you know, the Commission of Inquiry, that was very clear them, themselves that we should never really just fix things in place. We've got to be constantly monitoring what's working and that we should be adjusting and adapting. Um, and then of course, we have had additional reviews and recommendations that we also need to bring into the scope of our reform programme. We also have a system that, that's not static. We're not in a controlled environment. There are lots of external factors and lots of changes in, in our external environment. So we are constantly looking at how we can improve our system, constantly, uh, listening to our stakeholders and what it is that we need to do to move forward.
So I wonder if you, I wa, I wonder if you wouldn't mind, uh, paying attention closely to the question. I think the question was, what, uh, is actually underway to address the over-representation of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children and families in the child protection system, which was identified in the 2019 F C C report and, or evaluation that is something that needed more attention? Uh, the question is, what is actually being done to, uh, overcome that difficulty of over-representation?
Okay, so, um, in 2017, there was a release of the Our Way Strategy and the First Changing Tracks Action Plan. Uh, so that is the 20-year strategy to, uh, which looks to eliminate the disproportionate representation of First Na- Nation families in contact, uh, with our system. Um, associated with that, Queensland established its, uh, Queensland's First Children and Families Board, uh, which, which provides advice to, to the department and to the minister, provides leadership for that strategy and also provides advice to the department in terms of where it should be increasing its investment. Um, the other thing that then occurred was a series of, um, uh, the rollout of our 33 family wellbeing services across Queensland over 2016 to 2018. So those are the community-controlled organisations. Uh, we've had, we get about four and a half thousand, uh, families going to those services every year. Uh, we are seeing some good success from them. We've also had legislative amendments, uh, so for example, I believe, my understanding is we're the only state or territory, uh, to include all elements of the Child Placement Principle, uh, within the Act. We also had changes in 2018 to enable delegated authority, where the chief, uh, the powers of the chief executive can, can be delegated to the CEO um, of a community-controlled organisation.
If, if I can interrupt to ask, there's something I did want to ask, how many delegations have been made?
Um, so at the moment, we have two early adopter sites, uh, uh, that are working on, um, fi, uh, seeing families within their area uh, that will be willing to participate in delegated authority. Um, my understanding.
Just to cut this short a little, is the answer to my question, none?
My understanding is that within the next few weeks, we will have our first families.
Yes, I'll take that as mine.
The answer currently, yes, would be yes.
Thank you, Chair.
We do get there in the end.
Yes.
Um, Chair, I'm conscious of the time, um, and, uh, I, I wanted to, to ask finally about something from your statement, which was the, the trial you referred to at paragraph 60, the Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander family-led decision-making trial, which you say was quite successful. Can you tell, tell us what's happened following that trial?
So my understanding is that, um, family-led decision-making has now been rolled out, uh, statewide. It's an integral part of our, our family, um, participation programme.
That's right, so it's very much the approach that our family participation programmes use. Um, and we, um, we understand the elements of family-led decision-making, so for example, um, family-only time, um, and, um, and assisting families through that process, uh, to, to make plans and come to decisions themselves.
So, so was the pilot, as it was, um, evaluated in 2017, was that rolled out across the state, was it?
Through family participation programmes, yes.
Yeah, and were there significant changes between the pilot and the ultimate rollout?
Uh, not as I understand it, no.
Okay, um, Chair, those, uh, I, I note the time, one could go on for quite a while on these topics. Um, I was told to, uh, be wary of the time, it's five o'clock, five, five Melbourne time. Uh, is that the, and I wanted to make sure there was time for the commissioners to ask any questions.
Yes, I think we'll ask the commissioners if there are any questions, if, uh, that's convenient and perhaps even if it's not. Um, yes, Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, I had, uh, an interest in understanding the numbers of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people working in child protection. Um, so understanding the 43% of Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander kids in, out of home care, what's the workforce numbers look like for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people working in the child protection system?
So for the, uh, department as a whole, and, uh, we are referring to our former Department of Child Safety, Youth and, and Women here, uh, in June, we had 205 Indigenous staff within our department, uh, which represents just under 6% of all staff in our department. Uh, in terms of child safety officers, so the direct front line, uh, we have, again, in June, uh, 31 Indigenous child safety officers. Uh, and that includes, uh, our senior child safety officers, which is just over two and a half percent of all child safety officers. Thank you.
Commissioner Atkinson?
Well, can I follow up by asking what strategies are you using to do something about that gross under-representation?
Yep, so, um.
If I could describe it as that, I think I can fairly describe it as that.
So there was a, uh, recommendation from the Commission of Inquiry about Indigenous scholarships and, uh, cadetships. Uh, so those have been, uh, operational now for a few years. So, um, the scholarship programme is aimed at Indigenous staff within our department and, um, getting them to get, say, a, a bachelor degree. And the cadetship programme is about Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people currently at university, uh, where we provide financial support and then have that as a pathway through, uh, into, into employment. Um, I do have the numbers somewhere uh, in terms of how many that we, we've actually had to date. Certainly for the scholarship programme, because it's done part-time and, you know, it's a three-year degree, so it ends up taking people, say, around six years to do it. My understanding is that we've had, uh, I think, two people graduate with another four to occur this year, I'm not too sure on that. And, uh, my recollection, but I can get back to you with, um, whether this is correct, is that I think it was 14 people in terms of the cadetship programme to date.
So that's not going to be sufficient, is it? You're going to have to have other strategies.
It's part of our workforce strategy though, Commissioner, to, um, attract Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander, uh, peoples to our staff. So through cultural practice advisors and other, um, strategies. So, um, you will see our recruitment material does say that we encourage Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples to apply for positions, and we have a number of identified positions as well. So I haven't, um-
I was gonna say, I was just, I was interested, um, uh, if there's been any thought towards, uh, providing an avenue for First Nations people who have had engagement, interaction with, with, uh, child protection to, uh, and, and come through it, having, um, an avenue to make a contribution for, uh, future families as advocates in the system?
Uh, so yes, Commissioner, there has been, um, consideration to that. We help fund the Family Inclusion Network, um, which, um, is an advocacy body, um, for parents, um, and fa- um, so, um, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander parents, um, can be part of that network, um.
That's within the department?
It's, no, it's external to the department, but we provide funding.
Okay.
So my question, my next question's on a completely different topic. We've heard evidence earlier about, um, people who suffer from mental health problems or psychosocial disability, uh, having the cha- child removed from them and then having to fight to get the child back, compared with, say, a, a person who has a broken leg going to hospital and needing some short-term care for the child. My question is about if someone suffers from any kind of disability or illness that requires them to have short-term care for the child, has any been thought been given to that child being kept with the parent safely while they undergo treatment? And if so, are there any programs that the department has for that kind of care? Because, let me explain, um, it's well-known that people suffer from postpartum problems.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sometimes even to the extent of postpartum psychosis.
Yeah.
Are there programs in the department for that child, the child of such a person to be kept safely with their parents so that the bonding can continue and they're not necessarily separated?
Um, Commissioner, th- those sorts of programs don't necessarily sit in our system. Um, so I'm, I'm conscious that there is a program, I think it's, um, through the Belmont, um, Hospital, but I'd have to go and look for that, but just so through Queensland Health. So for women who do experience postnatal, um, depression, um, or psychosis, that there are, there are programs that keep the baby with the mother while she, um, obtains, um, assistance. So because the bond, the attachment is, is viewed as so important.
And is particular, um, attention given to the link between, um, the mother, if the mother is a First Nations mother and the child? Or is this all just done in health and really your department has nothing to do with it?
Uh, well, our, our hope would be that they would receive the support that they need through health so that they don't come to our attention, so that they are being-
And if they don't?
To, if they don't get the help that they need, well, they, they are, um, notified to us if there are concerns for the child's safety. So if that child has suffered significant harm or is at risk of, of su- suffering significant harm.
So do you need a partnership with the Health Department to try and work through these issues?
Oh, we work in strong partnership with Health, um, to resolve, um, child protection matters. And we have what's called the SCAN system here, where we can, um, liaise directly with, with our health partners about what it is that our parents and families need.
Commissioner McCurran had a question.
All right, thank you, Chair, yes. My question is primarily for Ms Crawford. If I can take you back, Ms Crawford, to the discussion around parent capacity assessment and where the First Nations parent with a disability may be about to enter into an agreement with the department, I want to understand precisely or better what support is available to, say, a First Nations per- parent with an intellectual disability to understand what is actually going on, to understand, for example, the nature of the agreement that they are about to potentially into into?
Uh, so we do provide guidance to our staff about, um, how to communicate with a parent with an intellectual disability. Where we are really concerned about capacity, we may well, uh, link with the Office of the Public Guardian so that they can advocate on behalf of the parent, um, and support them, um, in those processes.
All right, so one quick follow-up question then is, so what training and what information is given to your staff to ensure that they really do understand that if somebody is not able to understand, you know, the, uh, proceedings or the conversation, what, how, how, how does that work?
Uh, so we have a number of, um, different training modules, um, that focus on working with parents with a disability. Um, we also have a specialist services, um, clinician team. So what we often encourage child safety officers to do is to consult with that specialist services team. So they have, um, disability expertise, um, and will assist child safety officers, um, access the support that parents need.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, just a couple more questions from me. Do I understand that in order to be appointed as a frontline caseworker, it is essential to have a bachelor's degree or better?
For a child safety officer, yes.
Why?
Why?
Yes, why, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you appoint some First Nations people, for example, with special expertise of the kind that we've been discussing, even though they may not have tertiary qualifications?
Uh, so the cultural practice advisor positions, um, are available, um, to First Nations, um, people who don't have a qualification.
Yeah, but what's the answer to my question?
Uh, yes, we, we would consider it, we would. In fact, our Chief Human Resource Officer has been talking about that very thing.
Yes, all right, and the other question is, in the light of all of the changes that we've heard about and the recommendations that have been implemented, why, in your opinion, has the number of First Nations children been into care increased over the last years?
I think there are multiple disadvantages for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples, um, and that there are a number of macro issues and systemic issues that impact on them and that those are the things that need to be addressed.
And do you think you're addressing them?
Uh, I think through our, Our Way Strategy and through the advice of our Queensland, um, First Children's and Families Board, we are going some way toward that, yes.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, uh, both to you, Ms Crawford, and to Ms Muller for giving evidence. Ms Bennett, there's nothing else that arises?
There is, uh, I'm sorry, Chair, I'm told that Ms McMillan for Queensland, uh, has two questions.
Yes.
Or seeks leave to ask two questions.
Yes, Ms McMillan, very nice to hear from you, please go ahead.
Yes, pleasure to hear from you, Chair. Um, Ms, um, Crawford, you were asked some questions about the structure of decision-making and the manual you were taken to.
Yeah.
And you said there's ongoing interventional work in relation to that. You said, we have, uh, we're accessing further research in relation to that. Who's providing the further research in relation to this?
So we're supporting a research application made by Professor Claire Tilbury.
Mm-hmm.
Um, who is seeking to, um, run analysis of a more recent data set. So the data set, um, that has been referred to in, um, Professor Tilbury's previous publications relate to a 2010-11 data set. Um, and we have said we support, um, that research with a more recent data set, particularly post the Commission of Inquiry recommendations.
Um, Commission of Inquiry, which one, the 13th or 15th?
13.
The 13th one, right. And, uh, what's the data set, what are you talking about, the data set, what does that mean?
So it, it, it is the use of the S D M tools and it's things like, um, notifications, re-notifications, um, substantiations, re-substantiations, that kind of data.
What, um, how they or if they're taken into account, is that what you mean?
Uh, you, you'd have to ask Professor Tilbury about her methodology, but, um, we're supporting the application.
All right, um, this is a sneaky third, but it only arises out of, um, Commissioner Atkinson's question. Um, it, do you have any knowledge or oversight about the perinatal, um, at the Mater Mothers, perinatal unit there for mothers and babies?
No, I'm not close to that.
No, all right, thank you. Um, the other one was, Ms Burkino gave evidence this morning, you've already, um, responded, uh, about in relation to some of her evidence, but at a local level in Inala, what is available to your knowledge to First Nations people who are in contact with your department?
So we have both the Family Wellbeing Service and the Family Participation, um, Program, um, that covers Inala. Um, I've also made inquiries with the Inala, um, Child Safety Service Centre to see what other supports are available. They say they're very well-connected to the local communities, the traditional, uh, local community, the traditional owners and, um, elders, um, and they've got very active cultural practice advisors.
Is it programmed for the Camara?
Yes, there is.
What's that?
Uh, it's the Family Wellbeing Service.
And what is, um, A T S I C H S?
Uh, A I X, um, so that's a family wellbeing, um, service run through the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Health Service. So with the family wellbeing services, we're very keen that there be the support that families require and those he- Aboriginal, um, health services are often very well-equipped to provide holistic support to families.
Is there any availability of independent entities that feature First Nations people?
Not typically through the family wellbeing services, that's, um, more typically through the family participation programs. But as I said to Ms Bennett, uh, we do encourage, um, families to nominate members of their own community, um, for that, um, assistance.
Mm-hmm, um, do you know of the program yourself or have made inquiries about the program Ms Burkino's involved with?
Uh, I understand it's a health department, um, and it's an anti-smoking, um, cam, uh, program. Um, it's not a program that my local, um, colleagues know very much about.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, uh, Ms McMillan, I can see why you became a lawyer and not a statistician. Thank you very much, Ms Crawford and Ms Muller for coming and giving your evidence and for your detailed statement. We appreciate your attendance, thank you. Ms Bennett, I assume we now adjourn until nine thirty a.m., Brisbane time, ten thirty a.m., Sydney time tomorrow.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, we'll now adjourn.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.